We started here with the call to order of the Camrio Library Board. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Kildee?
Here.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Morgan?
Here.
President Pro Tim Craven?
Here.
President Trimbley?
Present.
May we have the flag salute? And Mr. Morgan, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
Please stand. Hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments, Mr. President.
Thank you. Are there any public comments? Do we have any speaker cards? Seeing none, we will move on to consent calendar. We have items A and B on the consent calendar. Do I hear a motion?
Move the approval.
Second.
All right, moved. It's been moved and seconded. Would you please vote? And that is adopted, I believe, on a 5-0 vote, Madam Clerk? Thanks. I couldn't read all the way over there, so. All right. Let's see, are there any? There are. We have some departmental items. And the first departmental item is on the Study with a Cop Program. So we would like to call up whoever is going to be providing us with that program, please.
Madam Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Attorney. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I hope this kind of sheds a little bit of light on what I do, and it's going to show a little bit of passion on my side, too, because as an officer of 12 years, there's a few things you get passionate about, and you see a lot of things. But one thing is definitely with seeing these youth today, I want to be able to say, we may have a perspective here, and you may have a perspective here, but ultimately, we all want the same end result. We want to see them do well, become productive members of society. And that's kind of what the Study with the Cop Program has evolved into. But I'm just going to go through a couple of slides really quick. My name is Deputy Greg Lindsey, for those of you who don't know me. Senior Deputy Sean Holzberger, who's out in the audience right now, he's here as well, and we're with the Camrio Police Department, the Community Resources Unit, so. So this program started in August of 2016, and we really didn't know what it was going to look like. We thought maybe we'd be in a room, and just have some kids come by and talk with the cop, or something to that effect. We really didn't know. But we, since then, we have kind of expanded it to where it's more of a mentoring role. It's a mentoring program that's kind of taken place. One thing that's important to note is that it's not an expansion of my school resource officer duties at Rancho Capone High School, but rather, it's a reallocation over to the Camrio Library, and working with the library staff and the city there. And one thing that's important to note, I'm not there for security purposes. It's not like I'm there walking around, making sure that nobody's doing anything wrong. It's more of there as a resource, like we talked about. It's just being there and being a counselor and mentor. In fact, earlier today, I spent about 30 minutes with a young man dealing with suicidal issues, thoughts, and stuff like that, and was able to help him, walk him through that, give him the help he needs. Yesterday, I spent an hour and a half with two females that struggle with some gender identities and some other stuff, and be able to just walk them through. The real-life struggles that are facing today's youth, being able to sit there and have a cop actually sit there and listen to them, it's been really important, I think, to them, so. Moving forward, this is kind of what I've put together on the mission and hope. And it's to mentor young lives and guide them towards being productive members of society, which I already touched on. The next thing is to change any negative perspectives that maybe some juveniles may have. And even the city people that are there, the community, maybe they have a perspective of law enforcement, and they see this program going on, and they go, wow, this is actually pretty cool. We, the Camrio Police Department, the Ventura County Sheriff's Office, truly care about the youth. And it's to let youth see that we're human, too. We're not robots, contrary to popular belief. And really, more so, even a big thing in my opinion, is to develop rapport. In doing so, I think that more juveniles feel safe to share information about crimes, problems, or issues that they may be dealing with, so. Moving forward, I just threw a couple statistics on there. You can find it at mentoring.org. It basically talks about how young adults who are at risk to become delinquent, but if they had a mentor, they're 55% more likely to enroll in college, 78% more likely to volunteer regularly, 90% are interested in becoming a mentor, and 130% more likely to hold a leadership position. And I think we can all agree, that's really what we want, is see our youth become for tomorrow. What do those statistics mean for me? This is kind of me in action at some point in time. In our terms, in law enforcement terms, it's really to shape the youth of today for tomorrow's challenges. It's plain and simple. Again, when we started this program, they said, hey, Greg, this is going to be kind of, you take on and see what's going on with it. It was, maybe we'll sit in a room, but I found that it's more of working a beat. It's almost a footbeat, going through and talking to the kids, seeing what's going on with each individual, checking in with their lives, and really getting a grasp on how I can help them, and honestly, how they can help us as law enforcement, because they share a ton of information. They have so much information about what's going on out there, that I'm able to share with any of our extra units. And so in other terms, if, without law enforcement, it's hope for the future. And I'm going to go real quick. So I know there were some questions and concerns. One of the questions was, do you wear a uniform when you're at the library? And this is actually the uniform I wear, so I'll step aside so you guys can see it. It's actually what we call a soft uniform. It was created as a school resource officer uniform, and it's to be able to hopefully help alleviate that stigma of like, oh, that's a person in uniform. It's a little softer, it's a little easier to come up and talk to. But I do wear a uniform, and there's a couple reasons. One is I want to be identifiable as a law enforcement, because even though I'm not there for security purposes, if something happens, as a law enforcement officer and a 12-year veteran, I'm going to do whatever's necessary to protect the public and to keep people safe. And that's really ultimately part of our mission as a sheriff's department. How did the students know that I'm available in that capacity, was one of the questions brought forth? Truthfully, I walk up and I tell them what I'm doing. Say, hey, we started this new program. It's called Study with the Cop, but I'll be honest with you, I'm not going to help you study, because I don't know how to do your math. I don't know how to do your math. So your stuff is way too hard. I tell them really what it is. It's that informal mentoring program. It's really sitting there and just trying to just help out. Attendance, that varies, because sometimes, as you can see, if we have a room and I have a presentation, and I tell them I have donuts today, the attendance goes up. If I don't, I'm just joking, but if I don't, it's one of those things where I walk around, and literally, I could talk to three youth one day, and I could talk to 45 youth one day. It just depends on what's going on. And it depends on the issue at hand. If there's a kid that needs me or needs some help, I'm going to stick around there, and I'm going to talk to him, and we're going to make sure that we can walk him or her through that. Challenges that we're facing right now is really getting this program out, I would say, out and about, letting the city know, letting other schools know. Because Rancho Capone High School is right there, we kind of have a natural instinct for the flow of kids to come there and be able to take, just walk right into the library and go from there. The other, the challenges are just getting those other schools involved, letting them know that I'm there at that capacity. So whether it be news articles, going to other schools, and just doing a quick, brief presentation like this, something to that effect would work. And areas to improve upon, I'm going to kind of go both with challenges in that. I really think that it's going to be, Joe and I have talked, the head librarian, and it's really going to be so beneficial once we get that youth area set, because then that's going to really, I don't, have you guys ever corralled, have you guys ever corralled cats? That's what it's like corraling youth. It's really, really difficult. So it's one of those things where if we have a spot that they go to, oh, man, that's going to change, that will change everything, because then they're going to be right there, they're going to know this is the area, they're going to know, hey, that's Deputy Lindsey's desk right there, that's where he stays. I mean, he's available to talk to and so forth. And so I would say, that's really big. One thing that I really want to do is, we have a presentation set up with a man named Dave Gross, and he was big in the dot-com era. And he had built businesses, sold them, built businesses, sold them, is a multimillionaire. With that being said, he happened to have some kids that went to Rancho Capone High School, and I happened to get to know him. And he said he'd be more than willing to come out and do a presentation on how to build business, how to develop that. And so I'm really looking for key members of the community, even at the state level, politicians, so forth, to really come out and have just a great presentation. Anything I do within the sheriff's office, everything I've done in my career and in my life, I've always shot for excellence. Not perfection, but excellence. And that's the same thing with this, is that I want to go for excellence. I'm going to go for broke, and we want to see that the city is truly seeing results of that. And I know that's one of your guys' concern as well. So I finished this, there's a couple other slides, but Merriam-Webster defines value as relative worth, utility, or importance. And based on the community relations that I've built so far, and this, the library relationships that have been built, the student rapport, really, anything within community service like this, I think, has true value, and it's paramount. I mean, there's no way you can really put a measure on this to see, for example, and I'm just going to give a brief case that happened. A young lady, and obviously, I'm not going to disclose names or anything to that effect, but because of the rapport I built, unfortunately, she was a victim of some pretty heinous stuff. But she was afraid to go to law enforcement. She was afraid to talk to a cop. But because of the rapport I built with her, because of the things that happened, that gentleman, that suspect, is now, he's actually in prison right now, still doing another four years. So it's, to me, I mean, how can you even put a level on that where you're like, this is what I've done to build a rapport with these kids? I mean, so, again, it's immeasurable. Just real quick, this is kind of, this is what I do. So I'm walking around, that's actually the teen area, the other one's upstairs. So I definitely am doing a lot of walking. Stop by the cafe, because I got to get my cup of coffee, right? And really, that's it. Is there any questions on my part that you guys have?
Any questions?
Are you finding that they now approach you, and that you no longer have to approach them? Have you gotten to that point, that it's a?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's been big. And I think, even when we have a specific area, they'll know exactly where I'm at right now. They'll ask, hey, is the deputy here today? Where's he at? And you know, to go back on some of the challenges, again, that I do face, I don't mean to go backwards, but one of the things is that I am the school resource officer for Rancho Capone, so sometimes, you know, kids just have a way of having something happen right at 2:45, and it requires my law enforcement attention until 6, 7, 8 o'clock that night. So I say that's a challenge, but again, that's just one of those things that we go through, and it's part of being a cop. It's part of being a law enforcement officer that we deal with on a daily basis, whether you're working a beat here in Camrio, or you're working at the library.
So they miss you when you're not there?
Absolutely.
That's a perfect, I mean, that tells you right there. Well, thank you. It's a program that we weren't sure what it was going to do, but it obviously looks like it's taking off and is successful, so. And your passion is overwhelming in some ways, because, I mean, it just really, you're probably what is really helping this program, it's that passion you have for it. So thank you so much. It really, it really sounds like it's working out. Tony's in charge. He had taken a call on me.
I see Mr. Kildee next.
Ms. Craven, you want to be on deck? All right, then, Mr. Morgan will be on deck. Mr. Kildee.
Just a comment. I know it's your job description, but I want to thank you for what you do in all of law enforcement in our community, how you care about the youth. And, you know, it's often said that, you know, this younger generations, when they get into the workforce, that, you know, when the 5:00 bell rings, that they all want to go home. And I think we've heard from you that your day isn't always, you know, an 8 to 5, so.
It's rarely 8 to 5.
Rarely 8 to 5. So I know the passion, and you got to love kids to do this. And, you know, I think that, you know, it's a credit to you and the department that you're willing to put the time in, and the council for, obviously, you know, supporting this. But I think this is some of the stuff that you think, out of the box here, that can be a really good thing. So I just wanted to thank you again for doing this.
Thank you, sir.
This reminds me of when we started. It started out a few years ago, and they're helping the homeless. And we didn't know how that was going to work, but look at all the people we've placed and helped, and changed some of the things about the homeless, and improved the situation in Camrio. Well, I see this is the same thing, because as it goes along, people are going to get to know that you're a friendly voice, that's trying to help. And I know that, as soon as the school gets out, you've got to go over there and be with those folks. But the daytime, your regular duties is the school liaison. And so I really appreciate you guys took that role and are pushing with it.
Yeah, absolutely. I know that the librarian, Joel Rolfe, had some words to say, if that's okay?
Yes. Yes, please. Ms. Rolfe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council, for allowing me to speak on this topic also. I was kind of, I came in around the same time this program was starting, and I didn't really know what to expect from it. I kind of felt a little bit skeptical, and have been really proved wrong. I've had many conversations with Officer Lindsey, and we've also done some, not formal, but anecdotal evaluations from the teens themselves. Basically, almost all of the teens that we questioned during our evaluation have seen Officer Lindsey around the library. Many have spoken with him, most exchanging greetings, and others more in-depth conversations. Two teens felt that they were being monitored. This was really early on in the program. But almost all of them said they just talked to him, they just hang out with him. Initial response questioned the need for the program, but since then, his presence has been generally welcomed by the staff and the patrons. Not just for teens, he's for everyone in the library. I fear, I've had lots of conversations. He comes in and talks to me about what's going on in the library, comes into my office. I see him as a real positive, a really positive reinforcement for appropriate behaviors in the library. He's an on-the-spot source, resource for questions that we have as staff and from the patrons. He doesn't provide lessons, but opportunistic, positive interactions. He's a really positive role model. Officer Lindsey stated just right now that he's not here for security purposes. However, there is a sense of security when he's present. I also, I just want to thank, personally thank Officer Lindsey for doing what he does on a day-to-day basis, and for being there for us, and for being there for our kids. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. Questions? Ms. Craven?
No, I was just going to thank Officer Lindsey for starting the program. It's hard to start up something like this, and you've obviously started a success. And to the librarian for taking the ball and running with it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And, let's see, that made me on deck. I only use that expression because baseball season is ready to start. I do want to say that I want to thank you, Officer Lindsey, and thank you, Ms. Rolfe. I think this is a, I salute you for this program. Officer Lindsey, thank you for your service to our community. Thank you for taking this program and shaping it, and doing a great job with it. To me, the components of the Mission and Hope slide are terrific. That's exactly what we want to, what I was hoping that you would try to accomplish. I think the statistics speak for themselves. To me, it's an extremely worthwhile program, and your enthusiasm for the program is obvious. The only regret I have is that I was never able to find donuts and advanced algebra or trigonometry to go together in any successful way, so I guess I can't blame you with respect to that. But I want to thank you. And this is the kind of program where, in my personal perception, is that it's invaluable because it's reputational. Word gets around, and you can bet the Rancho Capone kids know about it, the Adolfo Camrio High School kids know about it, and the Rio Mesa kids know about it, and the primary grades know about it. And we don't have to go out and advertise or market it. Kids find out about it. And that, to me, is an invaluable outreach. So I want to thank you for all of your service.
Well, thank you guys.
Yes, thank you. You know, what hasn't been recognized is that very early on in the process of developing this program, Deputy Sean Holzberger, who is also in the office, was a key component of drafting the whole program. And, you know, he and the team did a wonderful job in pulling this together with our then-chief Monica McGrath. So I just wanted to acknowledge those efforts.
I appreciate you doing that, Mr. Morgan. Thank you.
In a few months, or whenever after this year's over, it will be fun to find out crime statistics on youth. There's a reason, you know that, because you've got them occupied by something else positive. And, like you said, it goes to all the schools. And I saw that happen when I was a probation officer. When you have something else going, the crime rate goes down, there's burglaries and things of that nature. But I'd like to get a kind of monitoring of that at the end of the year.
And I thank the city manager for recognizing, Sean. Talking about enthusiasm, I know his enthusiasm wears off on, wears off, is that the right word? Rubs off, that's the right word, on everyone around him. And I know how enthusiastic you were for this and the influence that you had on the program. So you need to be recognized as well. You really do.
It was my pleasure. It really was. And Greg was a great pick. You can see his enthusiasm. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, that was our sole informational item. Moving on, any items from legal counsel? Comments from staff? All right, I think we're ready to, any other comments from counsel? All right, I think we're ready to adjourn this meeting, and it is so adjourned.
I'd like to call the regular Camrio Sanitary District meeting for March 8th to order police, and let the record reflect that all the directors are present. Amendments to this agenda?
No amendments, Mr. Chair.
Public comments for the sanitation district tonight? No? Okay. That gets us down to item 3, it's a consent calendar.
Move the approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, and a further discussion? Hearing none, please vote. That says unanimously, okay. Any comments from the staff tonight?
No comments.
Any comments from board members tonight?
Only this got to be the shortest sanitary district one I've ever seen.
I'm going to report on it here, because it's a CASA thing. I did attend the Legislative Committee meeting in Sacramento for the California Association of Sanitation Agencies, and it was a very, very productive meeting. We went through about 253 pages of legislation in one day.
Wow. That's amazing.
Anything that we need to know about that's going to?
That'll be coming through the Legislative Committee.
Okay.
Anyone else? Hearing none? We stand adjourned.
I'd like to call the meeting of the Camrio City Council, order, and let the record reflect that all council members are present. Do we have any amendments to this agenda?
No amendments, Madam Mayor.
Anything from counsel? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Move the approval. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I do have a couple of items, Madam Mayor. First of all.
Do you want to pull them out, or just?
I'll leave that at the discretion of Madam Chair, but I would like to, I would like to discuss item C. And I would also, I need to recuse myself regarding item G, because one of the warranty securities, the warranty issuer is a client of my firm. My understanding from the city attorney is I can abstain but stay on the dais. Is that correct, Mr. Parry?
That is correct.
All right. So if it's okay, I'll stay. But however you want to handle that, Madam Mayor.
Well, if you want to have a discussion on C, let's pull it out. If it's just a question, we can.
Thank you. I would like to have a discussion on C.
So let's pull C. We'll move that down to, I assume, City Council. And then we will go ahead and take the consent calendar with Mr. Trimbley abstaining from G.
Your Honor, can I, before you do, I just have a question on item D. I think it's just a question.
D as in boy?
D as in David.
D as in dog. Okay. Please.
Does that have to do with the Starbucks location in that shopping center?
Yes.
Thank you. That's my question.
Okay. That was easy.
I'll rephrase my motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item C.
C as in Charlie?
Which is being moved to, what, City Council?
And G.
Anything else, indeed?
And G?
Well, G isn't getting pulled.
It isn't getting pulled.
Oh, he just here, okay.
He just doesn't vote on that one.
It's okay. My vote on that would just be noted as an abstention.
Okay.
And the maker of the motion, or the second, would agree?
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to approve the consent calendar minus item G, excuse me, C, and let the record reflect that Mr. Trimbley will vote, but will abstain from G. Any other discussion? Please vote. And that does pass unanimously, except for that one exception. Okay. We moved an item down to City Council, but I'd like to take Public Works first, because I know we have people in the audience that are here. Oops, I'm sorry. It's the city manager we have people for.
Let's take the Public Works.
Public Works is, okay.
Are you going to take Public Works?
Well, then, let me ask the city manager. The people in the audience, are they here for city manager item A? Yeah. So if, I don't know, we have a half an hour, so I'm going to let.
Let's move forward with city manager item A, please.
Okay. So if the city council does not mind, let's go ahead and do that, since we have people present. So this is under city manager. It's a resolution opposing the sale, purchase, and use of anticoagulant pesticides in the city of Camrio. And that would be the city manager?
I will give the presentation, and we're just getting the change in presentation to, okay, here we're ready to go.
Sorry about that.
No, that's fine. So, yes, Your Honor, this is an item to consider adopting a resolution that would oppose the use of anticoagulant rodenticides in Camrio. And let me maybe explain or define some things here. So rodenticides are poisons used to control the rodent population in an urban area. And for the sake of discussion tonight, I'll break it into two categories, the anticoagulant rodenticides and then non-anticoagulant. The focus tonight will be on the anticoagulant rodenticides, because those have been found to have a significant impact on the, on nature, on animals up the food chain. And I'll get into some of that, but the, well, in fact, I'll show some statistics. I won't read through all of these, but just use this as a frame of reference to show that particularly in the Santa Monica Mountains and the wildlife corridors around Camrio, there are definite, there's been research and definite examples of anticoagulant rodenticides creating an impact. And that's because the anticoagulants, the way they're used, they're ingested by the rodents, but the rodent doesn't necessarily die immediately. In fact, several times, it usually takes several times that they have to ingest the poison before they die. Also, the toxic, the level of poison toxicity remains at a pretty high level for an extended period of time. So when the rodents are consumed by animals up the food chain, there's a very high probability that that rodenticide, if it was consumed by the rodent, will also then get into the animal that consumes the rodent. And the National Park Service and others have conducted studies over recent years, and the evidence is very compelling that there definitely is an impact of these rodenticides, the anticoagulants causing an impact. There's already been discussion at the state level and some legislation to try and control the use of the anticoagulant rodenticides by limiting who can use them. And there's ongoing discussion that I would imagine will eventually translate into additional legislation. But in the meantime, there's really an outreach that's been occurring to the local communities around the National Park Service to try and do something ahead of any, you know, legislated action. And so what I'm showing you is a map of the Santa Monica Mountains and the cities adjacent to it. And you can see in yellow, those are cities that have already been approached and taken a position of opposition to reach out to the community to encourage or actually discourage the use of the anticoagulant rodenticides. Cities do not have regulatory authority over the use of pesticides. Those are controlled by the state and federal agencies. But certainly, the local agencies can at least try and, you know, get information out to the community on the impacts of the anticoagulant rodenticides and the alternatives that are available. You can see from this map, again, the yellow cities have already taken a public position in opposition. Camrio's next in the line, and we appreciate that some residents in our community, you may recall, brought this to our attention several meetings ago, highlighted the concern in the community, and gave us a chance to research it. We have already, as a result of the information, taken action to, at the operational level, discontinue the use of anticoagulant rodenticides on city property, so around city grounds and buildings, as well in the open space areas that we control. We've already moved forward to discontinue the use. So that's really not the item before you, but instead, it's more of, do we want to take a public position? And if we do, there are certain alternatives, and I'm not going to go through a lot of examples here, but just touch on a couple for you to understand. There are some fairly simple alternatives that can be done that can help significantly reduce the attraction of rodents to an urban area. A lot of it is just not having trash and food out. These, fortunately, photos are not in Camrio, but we use them as an example. And we've even reached out to Harrison to reinforce that. We've heard that, you know, in other areas, when the solid waste hauler takes a trash bin bin and places it back in the enclosure, that the lid is open and trapped up against the wall so people physically can't close it, and then that leaves the trash exposed. And Harrison does a good job of generally making sure the lids are closed, but we just wanted to emphasize, to continue to remind the drivers to look for that. There are simple things like just by sealing up holes in buildings that can, you know, prevent the rodents from getting in and causing problems. And the National Park Service has a website, and I'm not gonna read through all of this, but this is an example of information they put out. So there's resources available out there to help explain to the public alternatives that are available that can be just as effective. Some of the neighboring communities that have already taken a position to not use anticoagulant rodenticides have put brochures together, and we would rely on a lot of the information that is already out there. So if you do take action to move forward with this, we would, you know, certainly rely on what's already been provided in other communities to help provide, to help us with the outreach to our community with information. And so really, what's before you tonight are two actions. One is the agenda item, which is a resolution for you to consider, and we are recommending a motion to approve a resolution urging that businesses and residents in our community discontinue the use of anticoagulant rodenticides. And if you do approve the resolution, then we would reach out to the community with public information and explain alternatives and the problems with using the anticoagulant rodenticides. And we would rely on, you know, some of the residents and groups that have brought this to our attention. They already have experience in getting the word out and helping. And so we would rely on them to help us, help the community avoid the use of the anticoagulant rodenticides. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Questions?
Through the years, people who leave dog food out seem to have a problem with rats, and when they get it in a garbage can and seal the top, that seems to go away. But the problem that keeps going and going and going are gophers. How do you control them without using something like this?
Well, again, there are other, there are the other poisons that aren't the anticoagulant rodenticides that are ingested and tend to act more quickly, and then also the toxic levels tend to diminish more rapidly and don't have, at least at this point, haven't been documented to create the same level of impact to animals up the food chain. Not that those are maybe the first alternative that are recommended, but there's kill traps that can be used. In fact, in areas where, just because we are trying to contain, you know, if a rodent is killed, we have the traps that look like they're the bait traps for the anticoagulant rodenticides, but the bait is not the poison. It's actually just food that attracts the rodent, and there's a kill trap, and then we can remove the rodent from the... So there are other types of, unfortunately, there are, you know, solutions that also involve killing the rodent, but that is only one of various things to try. And your comment's good, and that is just by removing food and other, and trash and attractors. That can sometimes go a long ways. But in cases where it doesn't, there are other alternatives that can be used.
Thanks. Thank you. Any questions? Morgan?
Just a couple, three things, 'cause I've got a lot of squirrels in my trees running around. They go through the bougainvillea just like the rats do. Even better sometime. If you have those traps that you're talking about, the ones you set out, and if you're gonna do a rat, you're gonna have to do a good-sized little trap because you won't get them otherwise. But if you do that, is that gonna also harm squirrels?
Again, probably the rodenticides, if they are being used in areas, could already be harming squirrels.
Not those. I'm talking about the traps you're talking about.
So, again, it's hard to generalize. There are some traps that could probably affect the squirrels, but there are probably others that can be tailored to a rodent that may not affect the squirrels. So those are, those are the types of things that we would research and provide the resources to explain in more detail.
Okay, one, a couple of other things. You know it's been a wet season, so usually after wet season, you have a lot of rats, or a lot of rodents that appear because they're new births, and it's been good for them in most cases. You said there's other alternatives to this rodenticide, because I know, I hate to see using that because the owls get a hold of it. And I hate to see the owls disappear. And I used to hear them all the time in Camrio, but don't hear them much anymore. But what other alternatives? I hope you can come up with those that can get rid of rats without bothering squirrels or owls and so on.
Yeah. And again, you know, the list is probably too long to get into tonight, and it's one of those that, there are companies, for example, that, there are some pest control companies, for example, that say they only use anticoagulant rodenticides. Well, we would encourage people to reach out. We would provide resource information to reach out to other companies that provide the alternatives. And they can come out and look at your situation and tailor a treatment to your situation to have the least impact on the habitat, but still accomplish whatever you need to achieve. So it could be, again, it could be another type of poison, hopefully not, maybe a kill trap, maybe, maybe it's, again, just cleaning up and removing the attractors.
Can we get a, moving the tractors is fine, but nobody's perfect in the city, I guarantee you. You're not gonna have 100% fallout and taking away certain foods and things. But can we provide the public with some of these other alternatives that doesn't...
That is absolutely the, what we're proposing is that if you do take action tonight, what your action is really doing is setting in motion a position, a public position that we are trying to do better. We want to avoid using these anticoagulants in the community. And then that will direct staff to initiate a public outreach process where we will have brochures and other sources to identify alternatives and, not only alternatives, but explain the problem so people can appreciate there is a need to change and link them up with the resources they need. And again, we won't just go this alone. It won't just be staff trying to reach out, but there are community groups already in Camrio that have been active in other areas and already are up the learning curve on this, and we're gonna rely on their assistance as well to reach out with information and even provide site visits and help educate. So we're gonna draw upon, yes, all the resources we can to get the information out.
Thank you. Mr. Trimbley?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Fox. And this is a well-taken idea. I'm glad that we're talking about it. I'm supportive of it, but I have some very specific questions on the resolution. Sorry. I drilled down into the weeds. And my questions are with respect to items E, F, and 1E, 1F in Section 2. And these are just relatively minor questions to make sure I understand it. Under 1E, there is a reference to the more, that EPA took action with respect to the more toxic second-generation rodenticides. Do those second-generation rodenticides, does that include the anticoagulants that we're talking about?
So actually, they are one set of, a subset of anticoagulants. So within the anticoagulant set of poisons, there's a first generation and second generation, and the second generation are limited to just pest control companies. The first generation is also an anticoagulant, but it's available for the general public. So the restrictions were targeted because the second generation, I believe, are higher toxicity, and so there's more controls over those.
Thanks for that. Then my question relative to Section F, though, I'm a little confused because under that, California DPR, Department of Pesticide Regulation, sorry for the acronym, imposed a statewide ban on second-generation anticoagulants for direct-to-consumer sale. So those previously were provided for consumer sale, and now they're not?
Correct. There was some lobbying at the state level to get rid of the use of anticoagulants altogether. And the pest control industry responded that they felt the misuse was mostly by the general public that didn't understand how to control the use of the substance. And so the state took a first action as to limit the use of those second-generation to just trained, supposedly trained and certified pest control handlers. The results have showed that it didn't have any impact, though, on reducing the occurrence of the rodenticides getting into the wildlife, up the food chain.
Right. No, I understand. And I think that PowerPoint slide you had is pretty compelling with respect to the statistics and the animals shown up the food chain. One other question on Section 2, though. The resolution indicates that we would urge businesses in Camrio to no longer use or sell anticoagulant rodenticides. Is that intended to include both first generation and second generation, or is that now just, as I understand it, first generation? I'm just focusing on the terminology, that's all.
Yep, first and second. Restrict all, discourage the use of all types of anticoagulant rodenticides, first and second generation.
Okay, so that's the intent. All right, fine. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have one. If someone goes in their garage and finds they have some, and it could be in there for how many years, can they take that to our toxic waste?
Household.
Or household waste, I said, I say toxic. Household Waste Disposal Center, is that how they would get rid of it? Is that the proper...
Just a moment.
Disposal?
Roger, do you happen to know the answer to that?
I would think so.
Yeah, that would be correct. They would have to schedule an appointment to drop off at the hazardous waste facility. So that item, those particular anticoagulant rodenticides can be taken there.
Can be taken there.
Yes.
And they should be taken there. They shouldn't just be thrown away because then they end up in the trash for something to eat.
Right.
That's correct. And that's a good point, and that's something we can certainly make sure we include in the information that we provide to the community.
Great, thank you.
I have a question.
Mr. Kilday?
Tom, where would they typically buy this? I mean, would that be, where is it for sale, for instance?
I imagine, you know, you can go to Home Depot and anywhere you would buy, you know, typical...
It'd be hardware, et cetera.
Yeah, hardware stores, poisons, things for your garden, you would probably find it there. And again, that would be just a limited type of anticoagulant that you could use. There are also people that will reach out to pest control companies and just say, hey, I have a problem. Come take care of it. And those companies will default to using anticoagulant rodenticides unless you request something else to be used, so...
Is there still alternatives that, other than the anticoagulants, that you can get at a B&amp;B or Home Depot or Lowe's or wherever?
Yes, there are also non-anticoagulant poisons, and there are kill traps and other alternatives available, yes.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Well, we do have some speaker sheets on this one, and so we will start with those. Our first person is Chris Bocart. And if you'll state your name for the record, you don't have to give us your address, and you all have three minutes. You'll see the clock start to tick down as you start, and it will turn yellow at one minute to let you know to wrap up.
Madam Mayor and council member, thank you. It's a privilege to talk to you tonight. I would like to say that man gave himself the right to be God. It doesn't work. And God has billions of years of experience. We're just starting with the advent of the mega-chemical companies. We are eradicating wildlife and the predators of the pests we want to control. We want to leave a legacy to our grandchildren and a world where the sun shines, where the birds sing, the animals roam in the forests and the parks. And we surely know the verb to kill, but we would like to learn, to teach and to learn, to learn and to teach to our children the verb to love. Now, to answer some of the questions I've heard for some substitute to these killers, I would say for the gophers, euphorbia. It's a cactus. It has roots that spreads in one or two years, about very far away, and the odor is very unpleasant for the gophers. So my tactic here is, we don't want them, we send them to the neighbors. Well, that's why also no bushes but lavender. They don't like it. They go to the neighbor. That's what I'd like to say.
Thank you very much. Our next card is for Joel Schuman.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm Joel Schuman from Malibu, and I'm in the Poison Free Malibu Organization. We were called in by a couple of your citizens. And I just want to briefly, because Tom did such a great presentation, I just want to say thank you to Tom and Roger, who we met with a few weeks ago and have completely understood this, and I want to say, yeah, we will be glad to help you with the experience we've had. We have been promoting these kinds of resolutions all around the Santa Monica Mountains, most of the cities that you saw on the map. And also, just want to mention, Thousand Oaks does a great job, too, that you could learn from, both in outreach and in how to deal with specifics. So thank you very much, and we are here to help.
Great, thank you. Kathy Schumaker?
My name is Kathy Schumaker, and I'm wildlife biologist for the National Park Service, working on the, all the statistics that you just saw. I'm currently working on Nature Neighbor Program, so I don't need to repeat the statistics because you already saw them on the PowerPoint, but we are working on Nature Neighbor Program that is doing outreach with communities, local communities, to get this information out to the general public, to let them know, instead of just seeing it in the scientific research, but to let the public know that this is what's happening in their backyards, the different things that they can do. So we would definitely love to help you and partner with you in assisting with these education programs for your community. It was the second-leading cause of death for coyotes in our project, behind, of course, car accidents. And we've had three mountain lions die specifically from anticoagulant rodenticide poisons. One of those mountain lions being a two-year-old mountain lion, female, right off of Camrio area. She died in Malibu Creek State Park, so... So that was one of my big concerns. I wanted to get that information out. The other thing is, the bobcats, we found 89%, almost 90% of the bobcats that we tested tested positive for these poisons. This is happening throughout the world and the country, and so we want to make sure that we get this information out. It is related to mange. Mange has been a cause of death for these animals, and it's a, they are having, the mange is having severe impacts on these animals. Because they have the anticoagulants in the system, they can't fight the mange. So they die, they basically starve to death. Their eyes crest over, and they become emaciated, and they starve to death. So, again, this has been correlated to the anticoagulants that we are seeing moving around through the environment. It has a strong correlation. So we hope that we can help you. Down to my one minute. And Tom, thank you so much for bringing this to their attention. And if you need any assistance, please let us know. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Next, we have Jeanette DeSilva.
My name is Jeanette DeSilva. I'm a Camrio resident. Mr. Fox, my compliments on a wonderful presentation. You've really enlightened yourself and us on this topic, and my compliments to you for a very thorough and comprehensive presentation. As a veterinarian, I've been in Camrio since 1990, and I've seen many pets poisoned by these rodenticides. Often, those poisonings are fatal. The answer comes in integrated pest management, where we look for natural alternatives to poisons. And one of the council members mentioned the owls. I live along Cayegus Creek, and every night we can hear the great horned owls, and it greatly saddens me to know those animals are ingesting rodenticide-poisoned animals every day. Roger, I think, has become a fan of owls. We talked about putting an owl box up at City Hall. Perhaps we can bring the owls and the raptors back into Camrio, and then we can change the name of our city to El Tecolote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Bill Tabor.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council and staff. I feel like a one-two punch. Jeanette's my wife. There was a question about where could you buy rodenticides, and I started to think it's almost any place you can buy garden supplies, CVS, Walmart, Vons, Home Depot, you know, not clothing stores, but many other places. There was another question was raised about what else might we do to control the rodent population? Well, the owl box plan that I used was produced by a guy who's produced many, many owl boxes. And my recollection is that in a one-year period, one owl box, he collected over 400 skeletons of mice and rats. So if we get a healthy mammal and avian population, there's a chance that this is exactly what we want. They're a good food source. I'm, you don't want to eliminate all the food source, you just don't want to poison it for them. it for them. And as an aside, even antifreeze that used to be compounded one way, there's an alternative. As we, many of us may know, antifreeze can be ingested by birds, and then that can kill them. So there's an alternative to that type of antifreeze with a more modern one. And lastly, I just say, the Western Vertebrate Avian Foundation, that I believe is on San Pablo, if it's not known to the City Council and staff, the Audubon Society meets there. I was there Monday night. Awesome facility. Incredible, even in all of the U.S. as to what is available there for people to see and enjoy, that there's an active population here that cares a lot about birds and also about mammals. So thank you for your attention to this. You know, I think the time has come to make the matter known widely to the community. And I believe that we'll have a healthier community, whether we're locking down trash or whatever we're doing. I think community awareness is very important. And as I came in tonight and listened to Sheriff talking about exposing, if you will, himself to the community and drawing attention to, you know, his presence in the community, I think when we draw the community's attention to an issue like this, we're better for it. Thank you very much.
Just a question.
Well, you leave, we have one question for you, just a moment.
I'm from a ranch in Texas when I was a kid, up to 12. Down by, a river was there. We had plenty of owls, lots of a lot of rodents. They don't kill all the rodents. And I remember one time we had a rodent infestation in the little city I was in, because running along the streets and stuff. Rodents carry diseases. You can't neglect that. So if, that's why I'm asking for other alternatives to control a rodent population. And it can't just be with an owl. Those rodents grow, many, many of them, when they have babies.
I agree that we should have alternatives.
Yes.
I think there's, it's not one alternative. There are other alternatives. I don't know that we're, my wife and I are necessarily enjoying the explosion of bunnies that are in the park at Via Jacara and Avenue de Valencia, which is where we live, but the explosion of bunnies is probably due to the fact that coyotes aren't doing too well.
Yeah.
Oh, they grow.
And every night I see maybe a dozen of bunnies, and I would say, you know, we hear the great-horned owl, not every night, but many nights of the week. And the bunny population explosion seems to be tied to problems that the coyotes are having with mange, which is due, as I understand it, exclusively due to rodenticides.
Thank you. I just have a comment. If you go into that bird museum and take a good look around, you'll see that the city of Camarillo has provided the big Plexiglas boxes. So yes, we're very familiar.
We provided those.
Thank you for that. I think it might be important to, although it's not an easy facility to get into, I think that it's so noteworthy that the city might do all that it can to not only support it, but make other people aware of the importance of that facility and what it does for the community.
Great, thank you very much. Our last speaker sheet is Merrill Bergy.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor and staff. Thank you so very, very much for considering this resolution. Just in our discussion, as you can tell, that we are all interwoven, and that when the upper top of the food chain is affected, then we have more rodents, so we need to get everything less poisoned. And I am here to offer myself and contacts and outreach, along luckily enough with Kathy, who has been so available. And we plan with this resolution as an indication of how important this is for our community to outreach. It would be wonderful to do Earth Day events at the library. I plan to contact the Camarillo Springs HOA, of course, Pleasant Valley Recreation and Parks District. So I am pledged to make this an important effort here, because we are so close to the mountains, as well as we're so fortunate to have so much wildlife right here in our own community. So thank you very, very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you for the work you do. Okay, that was the last of our speaker sheets. Any questions from council, and if not, comments or a motion? Will the approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just one little piece. I'm glad you guys are doing what you're doing. The only thing we're looking, I'm looking for is an alternative that don't kill anybody else, because we don't want a rodent overpopulation either. That's like having mountain lions up in Mammoth. There's so many of them, they're killing deer left and right, because there's no control right now. And sometimes, there has to be control, not overpopulate. And that's why I'm looking at alternatives, so we can help control the rats if they get, especially after the season. That's all.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's vote. And that does pass unanimously. And thank you all for coming. Mr. City Manager, do you want to take the trees, since we have staff here?
No, Madam Mayor. I would like to take Item 9B under City Manager for the legislative platform, since we have staff here for that.
So Leo doesn't count?
We have staff here for the other, too.
Roger will make it quick.
Sorry, Leo.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. The item before you tonight is to consider the proposed 2017 legislative platform. As you all know, the legislative platform guides the council and staff in considering appropriate action on legislative proposals introduced at both the state and federal levels. Just also to indicate, the Legislative Committee did meet on February 24th to review and update the platform. There is an attached red line to your report, and simply just did some general housekeeping and cleanup of the platform, and just tightened it up a little bit on areas that we feel are going to be focused on at the legislature. Those items being increased funding for critical transportation and water infrastructure, bills that would develop realistic responses to the homeless crisis, also legislation on affordability for workforce housing, affordable housing in general, and also areas that would address public safety impacts of recently reduced sentencing laws, as well as priorities to protect the, to protect the public from the implementation of the Adult Use Marijuana Act, as well as the recently enacted Prop 64 recreational medical, recreational marijuana. And with that, the suggested action would be to, a motion to adopt the 2017 legislative platform in accordance with City Council Policy 2.02, Legislation and Legislative Matters. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have questions, or do we have comments from the Legislative Committee? We met, now that I'm reporting on this, do I have to say it again later? Anyway. Oh, from Casa, okay. I'm reporting right now. The Legislative Committee did meet, and we agreed with the staff recommendations. We thought they were very good, and we did take out the things that passed and that we don't think we have to keep an eye on for a while, because somebody's going to come change them. Good.
I missed that meeting because that, I had to leave at 3:30 in the morning to go to Mexico, which was scheduled for a long time, to visit with our sister city, and staff kind of forgot that I was going to be gone that week. Anyway, we, I read it and agree with what our committee did.
Thank you. Mr. Chamberlain, do you have a question?
Couple of questions and a couple of observations. First of all, I want to congratulate the committee on a job well done. Ms. Craven, I wrote down that you had read 253 pages of legislative text in one day, so I'm impressed. I spent two years working in the California Legislature for a legislator's office, and so, believe me, I understand that. So I salute you, and.
Well, I had read 226 pages, but then they threw a bunch at us at the last minute, but we went through them all.
Well, last minute is part of the drill, too, so, up there. A couple of questions. At least, my understanding is that the city's legislative platform doesn't necessarily dovetail with the California League of Cities platform. There are areas where this city.
Differs.
Differs. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Differs from what the League of Cities is doing, correct? So this is not some rubber stamp that we have trotted out. This is the product of some thoughtful deliberation on the city's positions. Am I correct in my understanding?
Sometimes painful deliberation.
Sometimes.
It's going to take us years to get here, but you're correct. This is ours, and in many times, we have disagreed with the League, and it is reflected in this. Then every year, we come back, we update it, change it, and.
Can you think of any specific examples in this extant platform where the city is significantly or materially deviating from the California League of Cities positions? I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but, I mean, can you just think of anything off the top of your head?
We don't really know the League's position on a lot of things, right, yet. You know, they'll be.
Coming up with it.
It's only early March, so, I know it's early, yeah.
What, a lot of the times, the League of Cities.
Legislature, but not the legislature.
It had to do with housing, I think, on a couple of them. We've differed on their approach.
A lot of times, League of Cities are somewhat controlled sometime by the larger cities.
Right.
Some of their issues don't exactly fit ours.
Oh, sure. No, there's always the urban versus rural.
Exactly.
And not only that, but a lot of times, the League simply won't take a position because there are big cities and little cities.
Right.
Well, duh.
Tony, there's also one that, as I understand it, that land use, anything that affects local control, typically we have some differences of opinions on that.
Okay, thank you. Couple of just other quick things, I promise, as we speed through it. On page, big page seven, at the bottom, bottom right-hand side, under Revenue, Fees, and Taxes, there are changes to Number Four. And my understanding is that that reference to legislation, that reference to unassigned fund balances is really a reference to the state potentially coming in and taking an unassigned fund balance. Am I correct, à la sort of a Prop 1A-type scenario?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And using newer terminology in the description of funds and fund balances.
These are, what's that? G.
Gaz.
Organizations.
Gasby.
Gasby.
Oh, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board?
Yeah, these are their terms, so we changed, just kind of updating the terminology.
So we used the gasby term. Okay. And then two questions. First one on page 13, under Item B4, underwater. Support legislation that addresses the conflict of interest requirements and the 10% rule that governs both state and regional boards. Can somebody just outline for me the 10% rule very quickly? So I make sure I understand it.
Which one's that again, Tony?
That's B4.
The 10% rule says that if 10% of your income comes from something that is being regulated, you cannot be on a board.
That's right.
Okay.
State law, federal law, it's a port, I think it's Puerto Colon.
It'd be under Puerto Colon, then.
And federal law doesn't, we've tried to get it changed at the federal law, so it's specified that doesn't. You couldn't vote on that item, but you could still be on the board and consider other things. This is why I had to get off the water board.
Okay, so it's an impediment to appointment, correct?
It's an impediment to an appointment.
Okay, all right.
Not saying that you can, you should be able to vote on that item, but a lot of boards, even boards that we deal with, they have representatives from the farm group, from the city group. For many years, they've changed the composition of the water board now. But for many years, cities could not have a representative on the water board because 10% of their income maybe came from the city.
Okay, okay.
Even though you're there to represent cities. So they would have somebody who had nothing to do with cities representing in the city slot.
Right, and I'm familiar with the very specific occupational slots, you know, that have been utilized for appointment purposes.
But this was, this addressed that.
Okay, and then one final question. Thank you for, this, page 15, Item C5 under Successor Agencies. It says oppose legislation that prohibits a successor agency from repaying loans from a city that were provided to the agency for a lawful purpose. And I kind of scrolled over that a little bit, wanted to make sure I understood it, but it's redlined out. It's now stricken. Can anybody give me the catalyst for striking?
Well, the reason is, is that all of our loans were repaid, and so we really have no interest in continuing this legislation.
Okay, that's it for my questions. Thank you.
I guess we could worry about a mat, tell them we have to give it back, I suppose.
Something happened.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Roger. Move the approval.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please vote. And that does pass unanimously. Okay, I'm going to leave it to the city manager again. You want to do your trees or cut back on study sessions?
Well, let's do the trees, but when we get, we're going to really need to move quickly into study session and get right to the business at hand.
Madam Mayor, then, on this item, just very quickly, I'm going to, well, I want to make sure the city attorney, that I'm looking at the city attorney as I say this, I'm going to abstain from voting on this item, which is a form of recusal, but my understanding is I can stay on the dais, but if you ask me to leave, I will. The reason that I'm doing this is that, one, I'm doing this not because I think there is a direct conflict of interest, but I'm doing this for appearances' sake. My understanding is that one of the replacement trees would be planted and utilized at one point in the year by Camarillo Hospice as its Tree of Life program. I want the council members to know that I am a board member and an officer of Camarillo Hospice. So again, no legal conflict, but I want to avoid the appearance of impropriety. Should I excuse myself from the dais, Mr. City Attorney, or should I just sit while we're?
You're not legally required to remove yourself.
Okay, then I'll.
He can actually vote on it once he declares it, correct?
No, he should abstain once he declares, and it'll be recorded.
But he's not paid on the board, are you?
No, I, I understand that, but I intend to abstain. So I'm happy to, actually, why don't I just go ahead and excuse myself and just come, you'll be grabbing me anyway, right?
You'll be going out there. We'll meet you.
We'll be going out to where you are.
We'll meet you anyway.
You can eat first.
Thank you. Okay.
Save some for us, okay.
Okay.
All right, this item is Additional Work Request Number Two for the West Coast Arborist Inc. to replace trees at Constitution Park and City Hall.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Yes, this item is to consider an additional work request and for our existing tree maintenance contractor, West Coast Arborist, to replace trees at Constitution Park and City Hall. In recent years, 25 of the trees within and around Constitution Park and City Hall have been removed, mainly due to different causes, including disease, insect infestation, and stress brought on by the drought conditions that we've seen over the last several years. So I put up on the screen the maps of the locations, and as was just recently mentioned, and it would be the 26th tree that will be removed soon, is the Deodore, which is utilized by Camarillo Hospice as the tree of life during the holiday season, being decorated. And that is a existing tree shown here. An A is the actual replacement selection, which is a different type of pine tree. It's recommended to put in an Afghan pine in that location. The proposal by West Coast Arborist includes replacing that tree with a good-sized, 72-inch box-sized tree, which will come in at and be planted, and give us a height of somewhere around 20 to 25 feet or so, depending on the exact tree that gets installed. So there'll be a pretty mature tree from the start to be planted there to replace that tree, again, that's utilized annually. So, and the map does show the other locations of trees to be replanted. So these are trees that were removed, and then these are new plantings. Several, the tree types are listed there. We won't go into detail. I've got some examples. I think you're familiar with most of them.
Can you show us?
Yeah, I will show you as we get there. And I do want to point out, though, the R is a type of liquid amber, and the right type of liquid amber to go in the city, not the one that drops this round seed pod ball type things. This is the preferred type of liquid amber. And that is replacing some trees that did come out where higher water use, for instance, alder trees. There are several alders of city property here that we've removed, because they needed to be removed, and those are also higher water use than what we're proposing to put back in. So the other types are existing already in City Hall. If you're familiar with the evergreen pear, the Columbia sycamore. And on the next slide showing around City Hall, the additional one here, a jacaranda tree replacement here. There's several other jacarandas out there already, it's to fit with the existing tree types there. Red iron bark eucalyptus on the perimeter, east and north. Red iron bark eucalyptus on the perimeter, east and north perimeter of City Hall, to replace the types that are there already. So, familiar tree types. These installations will require some irrigation to be put to them for establishment period, and that work is included in this as well. We're looking at where possible to incorporate that new irrigation into timers that are separate from the turf, separate from the other types of landscaping, and more specific with the tree irrigation, so we can, both with the timing and also the type of bubbler installation that's put in there can really regulate how much water we're getting to the tree, so we're not getting enough but not overwatering. So, that's the plan moving forward. This is the best time of year to move forward, is also why we're coming to you now to put this in place. The tree planting will occur within the next month or so. We're working actively to get these trees certified by our arborist, or by the WCA, and get the installation going as soon as possible, because this is the optimum time of year. And as an aside, you know, of course, we are reestablishing some of the urban forests that's been lost, and just wanted to comment along the lines of it is habitat that's used by the owls and the raptors and that kind of thing, so kind of a benefit to what we were talking about before with increasing or promoting those types of natural road and control items. So, just quick slides on examples of the tree types. That's an example of a mature liquid amber on the left, the sycamore on the right, which we have a number of those already at the park, evergreen pear in the evergreen stage, and then also when they bloom, red iron bark eucalyptus on the left, and then the jacaranda under the flowering stage. And the existing hospice tree of life is a deodore. City's landscape staff has done a yeoman's job at trying to preserve this tree as much as possible, soil testing and finding some fertilizer that would hopefully help. It showed promise of returning to life, you know, supplemental water, especially our nice nutrient-rich reclaimed water we've been applying there, trying to bring this tree along. However, it does need to be removed. And then the tree type that would, is selected to replace that is an Afghan pine, which, again, another evergreen species, and that is as hardy of a pine that we can get and is the selected preferred tree for that location. So, that concludes my report. Staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Kind of sad when the tree of life dies, huh?
Yes.
That one hadn't been in there for very long. I remember when it was...
About 20 years.
It was that long, because I remember when it was done.
While I was in Mexico, I took pictures of trees, about the same environment as we have, and one's called a primavera. Have you heard of the primavera? That means spring in Spanish. It's a beautiful tree with both yellow, I mean, it's fluffy. It's kind of like that tree there, in a way, and it's all fluffy yellow, and then also some pink ones, and just beautify the roadway. They last, they're like the jacaranda, which jacaranda drops all that stuff, you know what I mean? Gets in your cars and you wipe out. Anyway, it's like a jacaranda, it lasts about two to three months with all the flowering. It's just gorgeous, and I brought pictures to show you in case we want to look at a consideration of doing something besides just what we've had and see if it works, because I want to see if it, you know, goes down and what water needs are. But they're in a climate that's dry over an outlaw, and they're everywhere, and they're just gorgeous, looking up. Anyway, I'd like to show it to you, anyway.
Sure, we could look at that, if it would be inappropriate for this location.
Okay.
And not necessarily this location, but somewhere within the city, right?
Correct, yeah.
Right.
I have a question on this location. When we talk about the jacarandas, you're going to fill it back in, so we have the jacarandas surrounding the park like we do now? Because I know we've lost some...
Yeah, the plan, as far as I understand, the trees that we recently lost is there's one jacaranda to go back in.
Yeah.
So, that is replacing... We're keeping track of every tree that we take down throughout the city. We have, you know, electronic, computerized tree inventory.
I think there's more than one jacaranda missing out there.
Okay, we can double-check the record on that.
Make sure, yeah. And it may not be this recent, but, you know, a couple of years ago.
Understand.
And I think we've been, at least I've been waiting to bring it up until the rain came. So, if you'll check and make sure, because it was always so beautiful out there, and because it was, it formed the circle and the color, and it was gorgeous. Okay, Mr. Kilde.
Yeah, the tree alive, there's, are the lights, the lights are up there permanently? Is that grand, they'll be...
No, electrical supply is there permanently. If you look closely, it almost...
Will that be put...
Yes, correct. Yeah, that'll need to be taken down, and temporarily taken down while the new tree is planted. Right, then annually, the hospice puts up the lights and has a tree lighting ceremony. There most likely need to be some additional, probably additional support, maybe a pole or two. On a brand-new tree, you don't want to overburden it to start, but they'll be able to install some measure of lights this first year even, and then continuing on.
And that brings up another question on the lighting in the park. So, are, do any of these trees we're planting fall under the ones that should be lit? As we make, again, that's...
Yeah, good question. I don't know if Mr. Alomeo can answer that question, the Street Superintendent Leo Alomeo.
We all know.
Yes, there was, there was some trees that were removed that did have lights on them, so we took transformers off. Right off the top of my head, I think it might have been about three.
Three. And are we going to replace those in once these are lifted to support it?
Yeah, we can do that. Now would be the time.
Oh, now would be the time, then maybe, and that's not a part of this, then?
No.
Okay, is that something the city manager can do on his own?
I'm sure we can find the money.
Because if it's the time to do it, we should do it. I mean, it's, time is right.
Mr. Alomeo, while I'm there, you heard about that primavera tree. Have you seen that?
You know, I do recall hearing about that tree. You know, I think we've got a few here in town, so I'm going to look into that a little bit more.
I've never seen that, never, ever, ever, because it's just fluffy. It's beautiful.
Yeah, yeah, I'll look into that, and we'll follow up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Your Honor, I move that we authorize the city managers to sign Additional Work Request Number Two at the WCA in an amount not to exceed $35,000 and improve an additional appropriation of $35,000 to Project CH-16-01 with the account number 550-8610-486.92-41.
Precisely.
How's that? How's that?
We have a motion.
I'm sorry, did that include the lighting as well? Okay.
And so, we can approve that under the...
We can.
No, we can't.
It's not on here.
I will take a look at the amount of expenditure. If it requires an additional appropriation above my authority, we'll come back for that.
Sounds good, so I will not add that to the motion, then.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that does pass with four yes, Mr. Tremblay abstaining. I'd like to call the meeting of the Camrio City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Tremblay.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember Kilde.
Here.
Vice Mayor Craven.
Here.
Mayor McDonald.
I am here, thank you very much. Vice Mayor Craven, would you lead us in the flag suite, please?
Please, please stand, place your hand over your heart, and join me in the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda would be amendments to this agenda.
No amendments, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Anything from council? If not, we will move on. We have no presentations. I would like to call our police chief up under the Public Safety section, and he's going to give us just a little update on our prescription drug drop-off or collection, or whatever we call it.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Dave Norman, City Manager, and City Staff. Yes, I'd like to give you just a little update based on some inquiries regarding the pharmaceutical drug drop-off bins that we have at the station. We've been, this program was probably driven about 10 years ago, when obviously, we saw a need where the abuse was taking place within the homes, basically, in the communities across the country, in our own medicine chests, and basically, it was impacting our youth and our teenagers, you know, stealing from not only their family's medicine chests, but certainly their friends. And then we had the issue, too, with the pollutants within the water system when these things get flushed down the toilet. And since then, it's been extremely successful. Over the last 10 years, we've been able to streamline the process where the City of Camrio has their drop-off bin that's available and open Monday through Friday between 8:00 and 5:00. So, anybody, any citizen can walk in and drop off their medication. And what we don't do anymore, we used to have them actually submit their bottles of medication. Now, what we do is we provide them a sealed baggie, or a baggie that can be sealed, where they dump their medication within that baggie, we seal it, and then we put it in the bin. That way, there's no issue with the names, the prescriptions. It's done anonymously. We can co-mingle the medications. It really doesn't matter if it's a Flintstone vitamin or some sort of powerful narcotic. We take anything that comes in. And basically, all of our contract cities are pretty much following the same lead with that respect, with that sort of service. And just a couple of facts along the way. It looks like in 2016, we collected over 2,500 pounds of donated unused prescribed medications, which is huge.
How many pounds, again?
2,500.
Oh, it's a lot.
We're taking on 100 to 200 a month in some cases.
Wow.
So, it works. And even for our elderly population at Leisure Village, what we're doing, so they have difficulty coming to us, we go to them, and we do that twice a year. And for the last six years that we've been doing that, we've netted over 700 pounds of unused prescribed medications, and that's been a huge success.
Very good, very good.
Was there any specific questions in addition to what I've already laid out?
Absolutely. Mr. Kilde.
When you get that, obviously, you dispose of it, but how, I'm kind of curious, how is that disposed of?
So, what we do, we usually do two pickups a week. We send it to our crime lab downtown, and they actually dispose of it professionally. I don't know the actual means by which they do it, but it's all packaged up in a specified manner and sent to the crime lab for ultimate disposition.
Good.
Mr. Tremblay.
Commander Murray, one of the suggestions that I've received from a member of the public is that the city might consider not only having the drop-off bin at the police department, but also encouraging a couple of other pharmacies around town, like a CVS or another pharmacy, Rite Aid, et cetera, to perhaps consider sponsoring drop-off bins. To your knowledge, or, Mr. Norman, to your knowledge, has that prospect ever been discussed? And it's more as a matter of convenience, and I'm really glad to hear that you go out to people, particularly in Leisure Village, et cetera, but to your knowledge, has that ever been discussed as an option?
Well, no, it hasn't, but I know if you don't regulate the drop-off stations, you know, you start getting hypodermic needles, people start throwing in carb, you know, batteries, used batteries, and you start sifting through sort of a mess. So, I think it's based more on the regulating of the drop-off bin, but I don't know that that's explored in some of the stores that you mentioned.
There were some bills last year, two bills that were introduced in the state legislature, and I don't believe they passed, so that would have allowed, you have to have law enforcement officers collecting a lot of this stuff. I mean, the Flintstone vitamins, I can do anything with, but a lot of them have to be collected. You have to have law enforcement involved.
And that makes, that makes perfect sense to me. That's logical. My ulterior motive in asking the question is whether or not there might be any utility gained in increasing those numbers. They're, that's astonishing, 2,500 pounds.
My suggestion is that before we go on further with this subject, that if you do want a further discussion or input... Did it be put onto a future agenda item?
I don't think, I don't, I think they're just asking him questions, and I don't see us going down that road. Personally, I don't, because I remember when we did this, there was a reason. It was in the police station, and it was because of the law enforcement component of being able to receive narcotics, et cetera. Which brings me to my question. I do have a question. With the passage of the marijuana initiative and the, perhaps, being more available, if a parent were to find that their child was in possession of that, could they bring marijuana into you anonymously?
Sure, they could, absolutely. We could just...
So, they don't have to give names, how they got it, or anything else? They can just drop it off?
No, in fact, you know, that happens quite frequently. It's not an issue.
Oh, good.
That's good to know, that it can be done anonymously, and you're there to help them out.
Good.
That was my other question.
I have a comment, because I always think you need to give credit where credit's due, and I know Thousand Oaks and a couple of publications, and I'm not sure if it's the sheriff or the city that claims that they started this program, but they didn't. It was Camrio that started this program. It was the year that I was President of CASA, and there was a lot of talk all around about fish developing two heads and all this stuff from all the medications in England and also in this country, from medications being dumped down the drain and being discharged into creeks. And so, we were talking about how can we get rid of them, and I came back here and I started talking, and Roger Pachardo in the city manager's office came up with a very simple idea. He was just going to put a box out in City Hall, and Steve Dissessary, who was the police chief at the time, said, "No, you can't do that. Can't do that." And so, he put the strong box in the lobby of the police station, and that was the first one year, and since it's spread, and I believe every police station in the county now has one, whether it's Sheriff's Department or somebody else, and they have a big program, and the whole thing has changed from being, "How can you not dump it down the drain," to, "How can you keep kids from using all of these things that are here, and how can you dispose of them?" Because, you know, you go to a doctor and he prescribes you something, so you take it for a week, he prescribes another one because you're not finished with your cold or something, and the next day, you'd become allergic to it, and so, you got these, and then the same thing happens with the next one, and then you get something else, and it just seems to multiply, and I think it's an excellent program.
No, it is, and I think outside of marijuana, you know, the unused or expired prescriptions are the second-most abused drugs we have out there. And again, for the youth, for teenagers, that's what they're mixing with alcohol at parties, and they don't know what the reactions, the capabilities are, and they're devastating. There are overdoses, and all sorts of bad consequences as a result.
All right, well, thank you for coming and updating us. It's spring cleaning times coming up, so they can clean out their medicine cabinets and come see you.
Will do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we will move down our agenda to public hearings. We have a resolution... Oops, I forgot, sorry, I forgot public comments before that. I apologize for that. And I do have one speaker sheet on, under public comments, this is an item not on the agenda, and that is Matt Lorimer.
Good evening. Couldn't make it last week. I have a couple of comments. I know the Salk property's coming up. It's going to get reviewed, but there was talk about IKEA store. Burbank, which has a new IKEA store, they had one prior to that, 1,700 parking spaces, 1,000 people at the door. The average new IKEA has 1,000 parking spaces, and typically, 300 or 400 people rolling through the door. I don't think it would work well here. The traffic is really bad. We keep talking about destination points. That is a wrong fit for this community. It would draw people from Santa Barbara, Thousand Oaks, people from Willland Hills, Northridge. Whatever we do... Whatever we do, we need to be smart, we should look at, any retailer that wants to come to this town, we should look at what their customer count is a day, and what kind of impact. Burbank has been severely impacted, I was out there, talked to different people. It is a nightmare, even the one before that was a nightmare, so it's not good. Nobody's asking for it, and it should be really thought about carefully before any of that kind of nonsense is approved. Kmart, Kmart has a customer count of 300 to 700 people a day. That's another bad move, it would move the traffic flow on one side of town. Not a smart idea to have all the traffic on one side of town, because they'd go through town, it would cause smog, longer trips, another bad idea. And you've said before on the record that we don't need more housing, we've met the needs. I think that's a really bad idea, that shopping center is full, and that's one of the things I wanted to talk about. The next thing I want to talk about is Black Friday. You know, I've been talking about this a few years, before I brought it up, it was up to $6,000. This year, we've used, from what I've got, 24 hours, all on overtime, over $2,000. You know, it's time, you know, the factory outlet should really take care of it, it's for private benefit, it's the only business that gets free police services, they should pay the bill, okay? I've been talking about it, I'm going to still talk about it, so I think it's important. And I know you're going to say, they bring tax revenue, great, but in LA County, they don't use police officers, they use traffic patrol, there's private companies, LAPD doesn't do mall security, okay? They shouldn't be doing it. And another thing is, your crime rate's up, 18%, Solster up 33, that's last year, we don't have this year statistics, which I'll talk about later on, they came out. But the point is, I don't think it's a good use of resources, to use our police officers all on overtime, and there's no excuse for it, and I will continue to talk about it. So I'm hoping we can get them to pay that bill, and possibly use different means of security. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we will move on to public.
Madam Mayor, I feel like I need to comment. Number one, this council has not encouraged, nor has it ever discussed, having an IKEA come to town. And I don't want to leave the public with the impression that that is actually in the cards, just want to make that.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we're going to move on to public hearings. We have a resolution approving preliminary fiscal year 2017-18 CDBG funding allocations.
And, Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, this one, I'm going to need to recuse myself and leave the room, because one of the potential grantees is a client of my law firm. So if someone can come get me after you're done, that would be great.
So he has to leave on the whole thing, or just on the one particular? I'm looking down at the city attorney.
I think the problem is that the money could be allocated differently, depending upon what's done with one, so it's kind of a fungible pot.
Gotcha, okay.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. Oksana Buck will be presenting the item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. The purpose of today's public hearing is to provide CDBG program overview, review funding requests for the 2017-2018 program year, receive public input on community needs as required by HUD, and approve preliminary funding allocations. HUD started the CDBG program in 1974, and the city became an entitlement community in 1995, receiving approximately nine million in funding since then. CDBG is an annual formula-based grant allocated to the cities, states, and counties to help provide decent housing, safe living environment, and expand economic opportunities. Specifically, CDBG-funded programs must meet one of the following national objectives. Programs must meet low and moderate income persons, prevent or eliminate slums or blight, or address conditions that pose a threat to health, safety, and welfare of the community. Each year, HUD allocates CDBG funds to cities, counties, and counties throughout the country. Those allocations are calculated by using a formula which considers extent of poverty, population size and growth, and age and overcrowding of housing stock. To be eligible for funding, the city must develop a five-year consolidated plan which identifies community goals and provides a framework for addressing them. The city's consolidated plan is current, and it's in effect until May 2020. The annual action plans carry out the consolidated plan by identifying specific actions and how the city intends to use their CDBG funds. The accomplishments for each year are reported to HUD in the Consolidated Annual Performance and Allocation Report in September. The city's priority needs are identified in consolidated plan include improving quality and availability of housing, providing services to the homeless, low-income seniors, and special-needs residents, providing fair housing opportunities, and grant administration. This slide highlights key dates for city's annual CDBG process. The process began with a public workshop on December 7th, followed by funding applications deadline on January 20th. Today's hearing is to review and approve preliminary funding allocations. Following tonight's hearing, your approved allocations will be incorporated into the annual action plan, which will be released for a 30-day public review period on March 22nd through April 21st. After that review period, staff will present the action plan to your council on May 10th. This hearing may be delayed if HUD does not publish the allocations by March 18th. Once the action plan is adopted, staff will submit it to HUD for a five-day review. Usually, by September, staff receives a funding agreement from HUD, and that's when the city can execute agreements with the subrecipient agencies. And in September, the annual report is due for prior program year. This slide shows city's allocations from HUD since 1995, with the most recent allocation in 2016 of 281,000. This slide shows the city's current CDBG balance, which is 440,000, 640,000. This includes the unspent allocations as well as program income. We also anticipate additional program income of 125,000, and drawdowns of approximately 119,000 before the end of fiscal year. This would leave a balance of approximately 646,000, which would be rolled over to next year. HUD has not yet published the 2017-18 allocations, but for the purposes of this hearing, we estimated an allocation of 275,000. That's about 6,000 less than this year, because the funding has gradually decreased every year. The rolled-over balance, plus the new allocation, may provide approximately 921,000 available for next year's programs. The city's funding available for 2017-2018 can be divided into three broad categories. The first category is public services, with approximately 70,000 available. This amount consists of 15% of the new allocation, plus 15% of this year's program income. The second category is administration and fair housing, with approximately 55,000 available, this amount consists of 20% of the new allocation. And the third category is other housing programs, with 795,000 available, and this amount consists of 65,000 of the new allocation, or, I'm sorry, 65% of the new allocation, 85% of this year program income, and all unspent funds from previous years. We also spoke with Veronica Tiam and Associates, the city's CDBG consultant, to verify that it's allowed to use 15% of current year's program income towards public services, and the remaining 85% would have to go towards other eligible programs.
And I just want to add that in years past, we haven't taken advantage of that, so this would be something that we're incorporating to spend additional money down in the next fiscal year.
This year, we received eight applications for public service programs. All of the applicants are currently being funded. Their requests add up to 69,760. And as you see on this slide, this is their current year's allocation. This column shows the requests, and this column shows recommendation for funding. And as you saw on previous slide, the city may have 70,000 for public services, so we're happy to report that the city may be able to fully fund each agency. We received one housing program application, which is from Habitat for Humanity, and the city has available funds to also fully fund this program. The rest of the funding can be used on city's two housing programs, which are owner-occupied housing rehabilitation and rental housing rehabilitation program. There will also be funding available to fund a new program, affordable property acquisition. This would allow the city to purchase a property for the purpose of providing affordable housing. If the city's allocation will be 275,000, we would have 20% of that, or about 55,000, for administration, which includes 8,000 for fair housing program. Staff's recommendation is to approve a resolution setting forth the preliminary fiscal year 2017-2018 CDBG funding allocations. And this concludes my presentation, and staff's available to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Do we have questions? Well, this is going to, I think at first, that everyone is going to get what they asked for, so it should be a, should be an easy night tonight.
Simple.
So this is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing. Ellen, thank you, sorry, left you standing there. And so I will call you up. I'm trying to see, some have put their affiliation, some have not, so I will call you up. Again, you've, I don't know if you all knew before you came in the door exactly what the recommendation was, but as I just mentioned, the recommendation from staff is to fully fund all requests. I said that should make it easy tonight. Our first speaker is Mark Wild. You can. I don't know, can you skip?
That was my best attempt, right there. That's as good as it gets. Honorable council members, my name is Mark Wild. I am Livingston's Development Director, and I'm happy to be here tonight with a member of our Volunteer Development Committee, Gail Beltramo, some of you may know.
We know Gail.
We also have two other board members that are Camarillo residents, Laura McAvoy and Jane Donlin Waters. Neither one could be here tonight, but they're, they're very, they will be very thrilled to hear this news. We can't thank you enough for your support and commitment to partner with Livingston again. Livingston has been providing vital home health care to the counties under uninsured sick, elderly, terminally ill, and homebound for 70 years, something we're very proud of. We are the county's only nonprofit provider of comprehensive home health, medical hospice, and family support. In 2016, we provided care to 804 Camarillo residents, 70 of whom needed subsidized care. Livingston qualitative care is unsurpassed. 98% of our home health care patients would recommend our services to their family and friends. There are other providers of home health care, hospice, and respite care in the community, but they are for-profit operations that do not provide care to the uninsured and underinsured. In Camarillo, like the rest of the county, Livingston is the home health safety net for residents regardless of their ability to pay for services. I would like to just share a patient's story, so you know the kind of people that your funds are taking care of. Walter, not his real name, of course, a diabetic recently had a scrape on his back that he could not feel, but could not, that he could feel but could not see. Unfortunately, his wound obsessed and became so infected that he ended up having to go to Pleasant Valley Hospital. Once the hospital was able to stabilize his wound and diabetes, Walter was discharged to Livingston's care. Because of the location of the wound, Walter was unable to do any of his own wound care. During the 23 weeks that he was on our care, he received 97 skilled nursing visits. These visits not only resulted in completely healing the wound on Walter's back, but they also allowed our nurses to educate and press upon him the importance of effectively controlling his diabetes. So Gail and I would like to thank you for your recommendation, and hope that this is the start of another 70-year relationship, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for all you do for our community.
Your Honor, just one thing. Thank you for your assistance with my mother. I mean, she's deceased now, but you guys were there, and we really appreciate what you did.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jason Meek with Turning Point Foundation.
Good evening. I first wanted to express, on behalf of Turning Point and the over 1,000 of chronically mentally and physically ill individuals in this county, I wanted to express our sincerest gratitude, we certainly appreciate it. Turning Point is on its 28th year here in the county, serving those that are medically indigent and have severe, anywhere from chronic to absolute severe mental health symptoms, and are experiencing homelessness and all other sorts of co-occurring disorders. We also, this year, have housed and cared for 28 of our servicemen and women that have experienced extreme trauma as a result of their time in war. And the result has been absolutely outstanding. Of those 28, 27 are now permanently housed, with one waiting to get housing of their own. Now, we all, within Camarillo, we have a 24-bed permanent housing facility, and it's one thing to get these individuals with chronic health and mental health symptoms off the street and into a place of their own. It is certainly another to maintain that housing. And the difference is, we do provide comprehensive and holistic treatment in connection to healthcare services, primary care providers, and all the benefits afforded to our brave men and women of our armed forces. So again, on behalf of all that we serve, thank you so much for your support. The dollars are well-spent, and the results are absolutely impactful on their overall quality of life, so thank you again. I'd be more happy to answer any questions.
Do we have questions? We just want to thank you for all you do for our community. Next in my pile of cards, I probably should have read this before. Gail Beltramo didn't want to speak, but she just wanted to say how happy she is to represent us and thank you for our support, so thank you, Gail, for being here. The next one is Felipe Flores, and I don't know which agency, so you'll have to tell us. Oh, there you go.
Good evening, Mrs. Mayor, City Council staff, and attendees. My name is Felipe Flores, and I'm here from Habitat for Humanity of Intera County. And first and foremost, I'm here to say thank you for your partnership for the past, well, four years with this one, but in the past three years, we've served 35 families with different needs, ranging from grab bars, ramps, roof patches, new roofs, lowering kitchen cabinets for folks who have arthritis and can't reach their pantry, and all sorts of repairs of that style. So we've been very blessed, we're very thankful for your partnership, 35 families. And then this year, even though it was a reduced year for us, we started a couple months ago, we're serving, we're in the midst of serving another seven families with the 70,000 that we've been realotted, so doing wonderful work with these families. So thank you for this wonderful opportunity, and thank you for this future allotment we have, we have in the midst, to get to another 10 families and continue this partnership and assist as many families as we can. So more than anything, thank you, and we look forward to continuing this great work together.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mary Lee, and I'm going to let you tell me your last name, because if I even tried it, it wouldn't work, I don't think. And it's probably very simple, and I just can't do it.
It really isn't simple.
Oh, okay.
It's Roboski, you don't pronounce the H or the V.
Oh, my, oh, my, okay.
Yeah, it's Slovak.
Beautiful name.
Thank you, my husband. Good evening, my name is Mary Lee Roboski, and I am a volunteer with St. Vincent de Paul at Padre Sarah Conference. First, as everyone has done, we really appreciate and thank you First, as everyone has done, we really appreciate and thank you for allowing us to have a grant this past year. Last year was our first year of applying and being allocated a grant. And thank you also for allowing us to once again apply for a grant for the 2017-18 year. I'll tell you a few stories about the people we've helped. Recently, we helped a young mother with a five-year-old child. She works full-time as a waitress. Her son was sick with a very bad case of the flu for two weeks, and she was unable to work because he couldn't attend the daycare that he, he goes to. Of course, she has no sick leave benefits working in a restaurant. This left her unable to pay her full amount of rent. So we were able to supplement her payment, and so she didn't have any problems for that one month. And then she, the next month, she was back on her own again. We're presently seeing a fifty-year-old woman who's had a serious head injury due to a car accident. She's been unable to work, and she's gonna be in rehab for some time. Now she's unable to maintain her rent and her other household expenses. She has no family in this area. We're helping her with those expenses and working with other agencies to get her in, to get her some help from government programs, and try to solve her rental problem also. We've helped a family of four with a six-month-old baby who was sleeping on the floor in a very, very small bassinet. The parents were unable to sleep because he kept falling out of the bassinet, and they were unable to buy a crib or mattress. We were able to buy that crib and mattress for them, and we've also been able to help them with their rent. These are just a few of the cases that we've helped people with. We help people without regard to race, religion, age, and ethnicity. Our volunteers, and we are all volunteers, go out in pairs to assess needs in home calls. We collaborate with all the other community agencies and government agencies, and the churches, and the Ventura County sheriffs have been very helpful to us, and we to them. So I thank you again, and I'm, I'm so thrilled that we have, it looks like the staff has recommended that we're funded, and I want you to know, we are good with your money.
Great, thank you so much.
Do you have any questions? I'm giving you each a little pamphlet.
Yes, we got it.
We've got it here.
And last year, we had, we had no government assistance on our pamphlet. This year, that's not on there, okay?
One of the things I'd like to mention, because both Kevin and I are members of Padre Sarah, but you, also, they supply money to you also, the parish there does.
The parish gives us no direct funds. The parish participants and members donate money to us, absolutely, absolutely. But we don't have a regular amount that comes from the church fund.
Right.
Well, thank you again for all you do.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matt Lormer again.
You know, there's a lot of good charities. I see them tonight. You know, when you have a child that does bad things, you gotta punish them, because if you don't, they continue to do bad things. Some of you guys tonight should be ashamed of yourself. Habitat for Humanity and the city of Camarillo, basically, is being sued by Ms. Bray. You all know the circumstances. Ms. Bray applied for a grant to her home mobile home done. The work wasn't done correctly. The city should have, should have made sure that Habitat had a license and it had permits. Habitat didn't do that. For thirty years, they haven't had it. Now, there are good chapters of Habitat. In LA, they have licenses, permits for many years. They're good, they do good work. This chapter didn't follow the rules. The city didn't do their diligence to make sure. So what do you do? You're being currently sued, along with Habitat, because they didn't have a license and permits. And Ms. Craven's mentioned, well, they have a license now. But you know something? When you do something wrong, you don't reward them. The structure of Habitat hasn't changed. Had they changed it, admitted it, fixed it, sure, there's always rehabilitation. America, we always rehabilitate people. If you make a mistake, I make a mistake, we move on. The problem is, that mistake's been going on for a long time, okay? There is no excuse for it. You guys should be ashamed of yourselves, giving a grant to somebody who didn't follow the rules. It was your job to set those rules and follow those rules. Today, that's why I'm here talking about it. It's shameful. You know something? If a child does something wrong, you don't let it get away with it, you punish it, you have redemption, and you move on. I believe in redemption. This is America. If you make a mistake, you do have a right to have redemption. But Habitat didn't, they kept denying it, okay? And you denied it. You denied, you didn't do your job, all right? And that's why we're talking about, we're talking about the grant process here. It's to reward people who do the right thing. There's a lot of organizations, you could have given money to other ones, but you didn't. You chose to hunker down and do what you do best, reward people who fail. I mean, look at the Fiesta Association. No new policies, yeah, shake your head, Mike, no new policies have come forward in months since that scandal. That's what we talk about fixing. You want to know why I show up? Do you want to know why people say they're upset with the city council? Because you never fix the problems. You, you avoid them, you don't step forward, you don't correct them. We all make mistakes in America, but you don't come forward with those new policies, and it's wrong. And tonight is another bad decision. It's a reflection on who you are as individuals, that you won't take the time and fix your problems. And it's shameful. I mean, you know, the organization could be a good organization, they need to clean up their act, and I think they will, but we're talking about funding them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lormer. You're certainly entitled to your own opinion. Our next speaker is Kelly from Two One One.
Two One One.
Do you have a last name?
Thank you so much for your funding our program.
Can you pull that mic closer?
Absolutely, I wanted to definitely give you thanks for funding our program, and we've been partners for a long time, and I appreciate your continued, you know, support of our program. January and February are the most busy months for Two and One while we're helping people with VITA taxes, but this year has been special for us, especially in February, where we took almost ten thousand calls in the call center. We were able to help, we take calls for Ventura County, but also nineteen other counties here in Camarillo at our call center, and we were able to help people through the storms that were going on, including Oroville during their dam issues, where we told them about all the different evacuation locations around the state where they could go to. We were able to help Monterey and also Ventura County, talking about the evacuation location when we had the temporary evacuation here in Spring, the Springs area. So just wanted to let you know that we're really busy at Two and One. We appreciate all of your help and your support, and we hope that we can continue our partnership going forward.
Thank you. You might, just a quick opportunity, you have two minutes left, almost. Tell them about your new texting app.
Yes, during, we did actually launch on February eleventh, the new two-way texting, and that has been going really well. On the first day of our two-way text launch, we thought it was gonna be a nice, cool day, but that was actually the beginning of the Oroville dam issue. So we did step up for Butte County and, and offered to help them using two-way text. And using two-way text, we were able to deliver over two thousand texts to people, telling them where automated messages, if they just text the word evacuation to our number, we were able to tell them all of the evacuation locations that were available to them.
Great, wonderful. That's great.
Very good.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, Your Honor, I think it's noted that we're one of the first ones, if not first ones, that did two-eleven in the county. So we're proud we did that.
Did a good job.
I think we were, weren't we, the first in the state of California?
Yep, mm-hmm. Camarillo was.
See, we do do things well. Those are all the speaker sheets I have. Would anyone else in the audience like to address the council on this issue? With that, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, have any questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Mrs. Craven, you'd like to start?
In thirty years, thirty, this is my thirty-first one of these, this is the first time that everybody's been able to get everything they asked for. I don't think there's much to discuss.
Not much to debate tonight.
At one time, we had this room completely full, and we had to really debate back and forth, but we've narrowed it down, and I think I feel the same way. First time, we can give you everything you want, those on this list. So congratulations.
Yeah, there's usually a little horse trading going on, if that's the right term.
I have a comment.
Mr. Kilday.
You know, this is, and I've been up here a while as well, but to me, this is building relationships, not only with the providers, but those that are in a position that can provide maybe some other type of, in this case, it's financial, but other types of help. And, you know, as we know, there's a lot of demands out there for, for all of us that are in this room tonight, and I, I just want to thank everybody for volunteering for all of these organizations. They do a lot of work, and I know it's not always easy to do them, but it is necessary. So I'll echo the words of Councilwoman Craven, that this is the first time that I can remember that we ever gave them, maybe we made everybody happy tonight, you know, that's, that's pretty unusual, but it's kind of nice to see it, to hope we can, you know, keep this up.
Right. Well, I just, I just want to echo that, I want to thank all of you, because it, it makes me feel good, and I am very proud of the city of Camarillo tonight in partnering with great partners who make our community better every day, and who are the safety net for those people who need you the most. And so whether it's building a house or taking care of those who, who have just served their country and come home with, with challenges they never had before, we thank you for being a part of that, and we are proud to be a part of that and, and helping our community. So with that.
Your Honor, one thing before. I want to mention Habitat, because you had a whole lot of people came in here thanking you for what you did to them, special mobile home parks like Del Norte and others. So you did some, you had some good applause for what you have done in the past.
Absolutely.
Your Honor, I move that we approve a resolution setting forth the FY two seventeen-18 preliminary funding awards to the various agencies and programs based on the city's estimate FY seventeen-18 CDBG funding allocation carried over CDBG funds from prior years, and FY two thousand and sixteen-17 program income.
Second. We have a tie. We'll take Mrs. Craven as our second, and with that, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that does pass for yes, with Mr. Trimble abstaining.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to take a brief opportunity to thank David Moe and Oksana Buck for all their work on this year's program. They have really brought some, a new heightened level of, of activity in CDBG, and really have upped our game in ways that I don't think we've ever experienced here in this city, at least since I've been here. And they really do bring some good creativity and some, and some new stuff to us that have really helped us out tremendously.
Thank you, and thank you. Bringing us some new program, it's exciting, and we'll see how, how that one goes. So again, thank you. We've got great staff, and it's nice to showcase you to the world tonight. Thank you. Okay, we are finished with our, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Trimble, somebody needs to, Trimble. Okay, correct me if I'm wrong, other than closed sessions and
Rec. C.
We have to go back and pick up an item under city council that was pulled from our consent calendar, and that is item C under the consent calendar, which is Guidelines for Community Support, I'm sorry, Guidelines for City Support of Community Events. Mr. Norman's gonna take it?
Thank you very much. On June twenty-fourth, the city council requested that staff provide a recommendation on handling cultural arts funding to community groups through the formation of a formal process. And on November sixteenth, twenty sixteen, a study, a study session was held to kick off that idea. On January thirteenth and January thirty-first, the city's policy committee met to discuss and draft a policy and make recommendation to forward the policy, which is entitled Guidelines for City Support of Community Events, to the city council for adoption. This is before you tonight, and what I'd like to point out is what, what is being recommended in terms of community events funding. First of all, we're recommending the implementation of an application process, and this is, this is new, and like cultural services funding, an application would be submitted by each of the event organizations that would be requesting funding, and that would be due by April first of each year. That application would in fact be a public record, and people could review those applications. The applications would then be made part of the budget information that city council reviews as part of the annual budget review prior to budget adoption. And then if adopted by council for this funding, then after budget adoption, the city manager will execute a funding agreement with each of these agencies with, that details the responsibilities of the recipient in spending the money in accordance with their application. This also is a public document. We think we've taken a traditional funding process, which actually has worked well over the years, but actually, we've now provided some additional transparency and accountability for the use of those funds, and we think that's a move in the right direction.
Okay, anything else from staff on this? Janie, you, anything to add? Okay. Mr. Trimble, you were the one that asked this, that this be pulled. Do you want to start?
Sure. C.
C, yes, I'm sorry, you weren't in the room, were you? Yes, this is the item you pulled from consent calendar.
Thanks, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm just catching up. All right, I do have some comments on this, and first of all, I am sincerely very appreciative of the work that the policy committee has done. I'm very respectful of that work. Right off the top, I want to make it clear that nonprofit organizations are vital to the health of our city and vital to the health of our residents. And I know that we are all involved in nonprofits, and that's, that can only be a good thing. The cultural and the entertainment events that are the focus of this policy are great events. Now, that said, I have a concern that I want to discuss, and I may well be in a minority here, but I want to raise the issue. We as council members are in a position to decide on providing city support to various nonprofits in accordance with this proposed policy. And although there may not be a legal conflict of interest, I think from an appearance standpoint, we need to be careful that we don't create a perception that nonprofit organizations are receiving city support because council members have leadership positions in those organizations. So with that in mind, my suggestion is that the draft policy be amended to raise the bar, so that doesn't present an issue. I really want to emphasize again that I'm very thankful of the efforts made by our community-based nonprofits, and my comments are not directed at any nonprofits or at any individual, period. I have another thought, I, I know that there has been a concern raised, and I'm gonna come back to, to this issue in a minute, but, but let me just deal with one other while I'm, we're talking. I think a question's been raised regarding, well, gee, when the city provides money to nonprofits, is that a gift to public funds? And my understanding of the law, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Pirik to confirm for me, my understanding of the law is if the council approves the expenditure, and if it's for a public purpose, it's not a gift to public funds. No findings are necessary. Is that a correct understanding, Mr. Pirik?
That's correct.
So in my experience professionally, you know, a legislative determination by the council of that type is typically not prone to a successful court challenge. So I'm not focused on the gift of public funds, but to go back to the original issue, I want to make a motion at the appropriate time, Madam Mayor, and I'll, I'll defer to the timing on this, but I would adopt, I would support adopting the policy as presented with an addition to Section C. to Section C, which would add Section C 5 for ineligible organizations as follows, quote, "Camarillo-based nonprofit 501(c)(3) organizations in which a member of the City Council is a director or officer." And that would be my suggested addition. And I think we, as individual council members, could certainly still be involved as volunteers and attendees and members of a nonprofit, just not in the leadership positions.
You went faster than I can write. Could you repeat? I'm sorry.
I have a bad habit of doing that. What, yeah, let me just, yeah.
I'm a slow writer.
What I would propose is that we add a sentence to Section C, and it would be number five. And it would be as follows. Camarillo-based nonprofit 501(c)(3) organizations.
Hang on, Tony. Nonprofit. Now, what was the other one? I'm sorry.
Camarillo-based nonprofit 501(c)(3) organizations. I'm modeling the language in number one, by the way, or, I'm sorry, in B1 up above. Okay? Camarillo-based nonprofit 501(c)(3) organizations in which a member of the City Council is a director or officer. That's my suggestion, and will be in the form of a motion at the appropriate time. And since it's a 501(c)(3) organization, it would be a nonprofit, more than likely a nonprofit public benefit corporation under California law, or mutual, no, probably a public benefit corporation under California law, and therefore, there would be a board of directors for that organization, and then the board of directors would elect their officers.
Don't you mean a member of the board or officers? Because a lot of organizations in town sell $15 memberships to everybody they can rope in.
No, Ms. Craven, you're right. And I meant director, very specifically. Either a director or officer.
Well, you said a member or officer.
No, I said, "in which a member of the City Council is a director or..."
Oh, director. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. It's because I went too fast. Sorry. Let me just repeat it one more time. Camarillo-based nonprofit 501(c)(3) organizations in which a member of the City Council is a director or officer. And again, I want to repeat, I want to emphasize, I am very thankful for the wonderful things that our community nonprofits do, and we're all involved in it. And my comments aren't directed at anybody in particular. It's just, this is a view that I've taken, and I want to share it with the council and discuss it. And I think this is the appropriate time, given this introduction of this draft policy. Which I will reflect on is an indication of what we believe, anyone, any three of us believe at any one time is an appropriate policy for, to govern the city.
Mr. Morgan.
When you say director, you mean officers are board members?
That's what a director is.
A member of the board, here's what I intend, Mr. Morgan. It would be anyone who is a director or a member of the Board of Directors. Those two terms are synonymous. Or, an officer of that organization. And typically, the board of directors will select their officers, like the chair, and the vice chair, and the treasurer, and the secretary, et cetera.
May I ask you a question? You're basing this on your own personal opinion, then, is what you're?
Yes, I, I-
It's not based on law or anything?
No, it's not based on law. I'm basing it on the, you're absolutely right, Madam Mayor. I'm basing it not on the fact that I believe there's a legal conflict of interest. There may well not be any kind of legal conflict of interest. But I'm concerned about the appearance.
I have a question, Tony.
Sure.
Now, can that vigil still be in that organization? In other words, like you take, like an organization, let's say that organization has members, but then they also have executive board, well, like the Lions Club, for instance. Let's just take that. Okay, you have, now, notwithstanding you pay dues and everything, but they have regular members, but they also have like an executive board that basically makes all the decision.
Right.
And the members can still be a member of that organization?
My intention, my intention is that this amendment in no way impacts being a member of an organization. So, for example, or a volunteer. You could be a member, we could all be members or volunteers. I don't know how the Lions Club is constituted. I don't know, for example, Mr. Kilday, whether it's a 501(c)(3), but be that as it may.
You know, Mike, if it, I think it is.
All right. So, feel free to be a member. I'm just talking about being on the, in a leadership position on the board of directors of that entity, or an officer of that entity, because of my previously stated concern about being in a leadership position.
Let me just, if I might, I just one more question here. What about those organizations that don't have a lot of members? I mean, they're very, very small. I mean, there's some volunteer organizations that have, you know, maybe 10 to 20 people, but of that, maybe they got five active people that go to the meetings. What is your thought on that?
I haven't developed a thought on that, because hypothetically, well, really, practically speaking, that's probably a hypothetical, because the organizations that I think would be impacted by this policy are established organizations which have nonprofit corporation status under California law, and a federal tax exemption under 501(c)(3), and not an unincorporated association of a group of 10 or 15 people just starting out, which, by the way, I fully support. I think that's great. But I think this policy really speaks to the larger type organization, or the more established type organization.
I think your question is, would it apply to a smaller board? Under state law, you can incorporate as a 501(c)(3) with basically two officers of the, and two members of the board. You need a president, and you need a secretary. So, you don't necessarily have 50 people on a board, you know, as you could in some, or 20, or whatever. So, it could be hypothetically, you could have a situation where you wouldn't have anybody other than your officers or your board of directors. Well, thank you, Mr. Kilday, or Mr. Trimbley, for your opinion. And I'm going to have to speak up, because obviously, I'm probably the person you're after with all of this.
I'm not.
I have served as the president of the Camerio Arts Council for almost 20 years now, and the concerts in the park are something that the city funds. I have always looked at this as certainly not anything that I have done for my own personal benefit. I have not done it, as some people might accuse, "Oh, you're doing it for political purposes." I will tell you that if I was going to do something for political purposes, I would not have spent nine weekends out of every summer of my life for the 20, last past 20 years, out there in that park to help put on the concerts in the park. So, if anyone thinks that that's why I'm doing it, boy, you know, you're mistaken, because it's been a big part of my life. I will also disagree with the fact that you think that we have undue influence. Every one of us comes to this council with ideas, with concepts, no matter what we're talking about, and you make decisions based on those. We have five people sitting here that approve the budget. We have a community that receives the benefit, and it really doesn't matter if this person is sitting on the City Council, or not sitting on the council. You fund it based on what is happening, what is occurring. And the concerts in the park have become a community tradition in this, in this community, that thousands and thousands of people every summer attend it. And to say that you don't think that one person sitting on the, on the City Council, being involved in that, brings undue influence, it has nothing to do with me personally. It has to do with the fact that the City Council has always found the benefit of providing that service to the community. What has my participation on the Arts Council done? It's brought stability. It's brought an organization that really, in my eyes, serves a purpose for the city. You go in the park, and I will bet you on any given night, 50, at least 50% of the people thinks the City of Camarillo put on those events. And the City of Camarillo is obviously one of the largest sponsors. We use the event, we work very closely with city staff. And having that relationship to put on a good event for the city actually has been a plus, because we, the Arts Council is always thinking of the city, and not just the Arts Council and that event. I will tell you that personally, me, I think as an elected official, I am held to a greater standard of accountability. I personally make sure that every tax return is filed, every filing with the Secretary of State, that internal controls are in place to ensure that our funds are guarded. We take great care in making sure that the city property that we use is done so in a, in a good and respectful manner. We work well with all of our city departments. Having that contact, having that ability to do that has been a benefit. It hasn't been a negative. And this is something, as I said, that's been going on for 20 years. We've had something happen in the community. It's kind of raised some of this talk to the level because of the fear of losing city funds. I think this new policy gives us that opportunity to really hold accountability to any, and it's not just the organization, it's the event that is going on. I'll take the 4th of July. We are a great participant with the 4th of July. The Lions Club is the primary 501(c)(3) that puts it on, but it really is in partnership with the city. Many years ago, we took the funding for special events out of the regular community service grant process, because they were events that happened every year. And every year, we fund the 4th of July, the Christmas parade, the concerts in the park, the Fiesta, probably a couple more. And we made it a line item in the budget, because it is something that this community had come to expect the City Council to fund, and expect to be able to attend every year. It didn't matter whether one of us was sitting on that board. And if you go around and you look at other communities within the city, or the county, within the state, within the, throughout the country, council members serve on board of directors, and council members take leadership roles. I can name some within the county of Ventura that also serve on it. So, I think to say that because one council member takes a role is perceived to be improper, I think is just, I guess, hopefully, if nothing else, I've proven it over 20 years, that it actually can be a benefit for the city. So, I respectfully disagree with your position. I, I think that, to me, council members, I said, is held to a greater responsibility, a greater level of accountability. And for that reason, we should be grateful that council members step up to participate. You're an officer in Camarillo Hospice. Do you plan on stepping down? Or do you, do you not want us to fund, or help and participate with the items that go with, that Camarillo Hospice does in this community? Great things, Tree of Life, for instance. Not voting on it tonight was perfect. You didn't vote on it, but it doesn't mean it can't happen. And to say that we would want you to leave and not be a part of that, to me, would be wrong. Because you bring an asset both here, and you bring an asset both there. But the council as a whole is who makes the decisions on what to fund, not one person. And I will tell you that I am, I have a lot of no votes up here, that I'm the only one. So, me sitting here doesn't guarantee you're all going to approve something that I want, because that doesn't happen on a, on a regular basis. So, I think because there's five of us, I think to single out and say you can't participate because you're a council member, I think you're taking a right away from the individual, and I think you're actually hurting the city, because there are people who can give. Now, does there need to be things in place to make sure we don't have what happened with the Fiesta? Absolutely. And that, by the way, didn't happen with a council member as an officer. It happened with an individual member of the citizens, of the regular public as the officers. So, it certainly wasn't Mr. Morgan being on the City Council that caused that to happen. So, I respectfully disagree. I know I've gone on and on, but I think I, after 20 years of serving in that role, I guess I deserve the right to say my piece.
May I respond, Madam Mayor?
Let me, the rest of the council has something to say, if they'd like to. Mr. Morgan?
Well, I'm right in the middle of this, too. Because somebody here comes coming, talking about the Fiesta every night, even though we haven't taken money from the city in three years. And we also have different board members, we have things that can, that makes us sure. You haven't seen our meetings, you don't know what we've done to correct things. I've been, years ago, when we had the Fiesta, and we made it what it is today, we had rules and regulations. I decided then and there to stop being president. I don't think we should, I don't think board members should stop, but president eating the thing, that was my own opinion. And I stepped down. The only time I've ever come back is when I had to help correct a problem.
Correct all the problems.
Yeah. And I had to come back and correct the problem.
More than once.
Because nobody else wanted to do it. Anyway, that, and with the Fiesta, same thing with the Arts Council, which I helped start. I was the founder, back in 1981, 80, I'm sorry, 83. And after one year, I said others should be president, not me, because I'm a council member. But remaining on the board also is like being on the Cameron Ranch House. We don't get to vote, but we're on the board as liaisons.
It's not the same. The city sends us to be representative.
No, I understand, Charlotte. I'm saying it's similar. We're, we-
You're a member of the board, and you vote.
We go there, and we're members of the board. I think that a member of the board's okay, but I don't think we should be in the, that's just me, being in a leadership position. Because you're the one that speaks for that board. And-
I disagree. The board speaks for-
Well, I know, I understand. I didn't say anything when you were saying anything. Just letting you know that you could still be, I think, I can go along with it, if they're part of the directors, I mean, part of the board members. Not officers. Board members, and that's it. Go ahead.
Um, I've been thinking while the rest of you are talking, and thank you for letting me have a long time to think. Excuse me. What I've been thinking is that this is not for any old thing. This is not for the types of things that we looked at in the, what do you call it, community service grants. This is for big events, special things that are special for the community. Many of the things that, as we develop this policy, many of the things we're talking about are things that cities generally put on. But our city doesn't. We fund them quite a bit, but we don't put them on. The reason we don't put them on is because we don't, we're not a full-service city. We're a contract city. And the department in the city that often puts on parades, 4th of July concerts, is a park department. Our Recreation and Park District does other things, and I'm not in any way saying they, you know, I'm not trying to get into their business. This is stuff that the city has wanted to do. We give them money for the parade. That's one of the things that's included, that we were talking about being included here. So, it would be the, just a few things. I don't know that there would be new things added every year. It would have, so I'm kind of torn. For a long time, I thought, you know, we shouldn't be funding things we're part of. And yet, as I've sat and watched, I haven't seen a whole lot of people coming up, stepping up, and wanting to take over huge- That's the problem. Huge efforts. I was involved with the Christmas parade for eight years, and part of those eight years, I was on the City Council. And I was a big part of the Christmas parade. And I finally got out off of that, got on to other things. I was involved with Fiesta for 12 years. And then, Mr. Morgan decided he wanted to make it bigger, and I got out because I didn't want to be involved with that much effort. There are a lot of people who don't want to take on that, that amount of work, or who want to get into other things. And so, I think that by saying, we, as a city, saying they cannot vote on the money for one, for this was one thing. And we can pass that rule. It may not be against state law, but we can say we, that if you're involved in that organization on, as a member of the Board of Directors, or as an officer, or whatever rules we want, we can say we, we're not going to allow you to vote on that. But then, to say that you're not at a level where you're doing the lion's share of the work, therefore, we're not going to let this effort be funded, I would see that the consequences would be that we wouldn't have concerts in the park, and we wouldn't have the Fiesta, and I think they'd come to a halt pretty quickly. I guarantee you, the contracts are- Okay, I'm talking now. Okay, I'm talking now. And so for that reason, I'm not going to support this if the motion is made. And it's simply because I think these events are really good for the city. But if you want to talk, not having each person vote on something where we're involved in, I could go with that. Vote on funding for it, I mean.
Yeah, I've been, and I appreciate you bringing this up. I've been thinking about this for a number of years here, and what would I do? And I've always tried to be careful that we don't get a majority of council members on a lot of organizations. And I've always tried to be very careful about that, too. However, when you look at what's happened here, and the hours and hours that are put in to these events that we do, it seems to me that we're kind of throwing the baby out with the bathwater here a little bit. And perhaps we need to look at a way that we could fund these organizations, which are really, really popular. They're important. There's people that like them. And, you know, council members as individual, and I look at it as just individual citizens more than council members on these boards, that want to volunteer in the community, like most of our residents do. We've got, I think, the highest amount of volunteers of any city, I think, in the county here. But it's always the perception, you know, what is the public's perception that's out there? And I think we need to acknowledge that. I think that it does need to be acknowledged there. But to go and say that, and it might just, we're talking about a city council member specifically, or can't be in the managerial part of this, I think is going a little bit too far for my liking here tonight. We had an issue here. It was a very unfortunate issue. We've all had a lot of discussions about it. To a certain extent, you know, it was addressed. Could it happen again? Of course. I've been in a lot of nonprofits that, you know, we're all volunteers, you know? We're not accountants. We're not lawyers. We're not a lot of things. But some things just, you know, with organizations happen, and they shouldn't happen. And I think if you put the necessary guidelines in to make sure that this won't happen again, I think that would be more of what we could perhaps do with this policy here. Because I'm telling you, I can't speak for anybody else. I don't want to go through it again. I mean, I, you know, been dealing with this for quite a long time. So, and it's not just that. I don't mean to single anybody out. It's just, you know, we talk about these organizations that we give money to all the time, and whether or not they spend the amount of money that's been appropriated every year. And we try to figure that out. But do we really know unless one of us is on the Board of Directors, do they really spend the amount of money that's been appropriated here? So I appreciate this discussion. I think it's, I think it's long overdue, quite frankly. And I think it's, you know, it can be uncomfortable, but it's something that it's necessary here. Perhaps we need to look at something a little further. But I think to say that, you know, they can't serve, I think, is a bit premature, in my opinion, right now. So whether or not the voting member on that, we can certainly discuss that. But I have to say, the organizations by far and away that we support do a great job for a lot of, and I know Mr. Tremblay is absolutely on board with that, too. Has nothing to do with that at all. But, you know, there was an issue. I think it's, it's an attempt to try to address the issue here. And I think it'd be in all of our best interest to do that to the best of our abilities. But I think to go so far as to say that they can't be on the executive part of it, I think is a little bit too far now. And I'm willing to look into another, you know, idea with this, of course. I think we all have to be. These are policies that can always be amended when some new information comes forward. So I don't mean to be long-winded, but I think that if it's a discussion, I think that, I appreciate the individual bringing it up here. I know it's not the most comfortable thing that we do here, but I think it's something that, you know, probably needed. And I know we needed to have a discussion about this. And to be, you know, as open about this as I can. And again, I've thought about this for a long time. But I know that there's individuals that do a lot of the heavy lifting on this. So.
Thank you. I think one thing to remember when we're talking about here, we're talking about funding for specific events. So we're not talking about funding organizations. They're for specific events. Mr. Morgan?
You're giving an example of what wouldn't have happened. Okay? One, if a councilman hadn't come forward and set up the Arts Council, or if it hadn't expanded the Fiesta, which was at 15 booths when I got there, which is almost dead, the council was threatening to quit giving money to it.
The council did not give money to it at that time.
They did too. I guarantee you, they gave some. Made it a four-year term there, but they gave some money. Anyway, also, the other thing was the car show, car show on the Boulevard. I was there with Tom Maloney when they first set it up. I said, Tom, you go be the leader and you get, and we'll push it. Car show was a very, very good event, and still is. They changed the days, unfortunately. They're going to change them back. They got to. But those things couldn't have happened without, someone had a little energy and wanted to form it and get it going and keep it going. This wouldn't have happened without a council member that would do that kind of thing, had the commitment.
And I'll go to the concert. You might have started it, but for 20 years, it's been growing.
It's still going because of what we did. You know, I put it together. I built that thing out there, almost no taxpayers' dollars. Okay? So anyway, if we hadn't been involved, we would not have, had done this.
All right, Mr. Tremblay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am aware that this is a sensitive issue. And I am certainly not after anyone. I think, I said at the very beginning, I think I said, that I may well be in a minority here. I think having this kind of respectful public conversation is healthy. And I appreciate having this conversation with my colleagues. I approach this in a very humble and respectful manner. I'm not after anyone. I do think, a couple of points. Never would I think and never would I assert some sort of undue influence. I'm talking here about an appearance issue. I'm not arguing the value of an event to the community. They're wonderful events that we're talking about here that have been mentioned, and wonderful nonprofits that have done this. And I'll stipulate all the time about the benefits to the, to the community. There's no, I'm not talking about taking any kind of improper role. And in fact, I, as I said, my suggestion was with respect to continuing to be a member, continuing to be a volunteer. It was focused on leadership positions. And you're right, Madam Mayor, I did recuse myself this evening. I am a board member and an officer for Camrio Hospice, and proud to serve on that organization, which does so much good for the community. And I appreciate that very much. And I'm not about taking rights away from anyone. I do think the Camrio Ranch House matter is distinguishable because that's a, I think we appoint an ex officio.
The city sends us off.
Two ex officios. The city sends us off, thank you.
The city sends us off to do that. So it isn't like we're doing something else.
Anyway, I'm, those are the comments that I would make. And
Well, I will go back to hearing what's been said. And I can, I suppose I can understand what you're saying. But I think that Camrio is a community that is a, it's a close-knit community that thrives as a community. You can always find the naysayers. You can always find the people who, who want to complain. And rarely do you see those people come forward to, to work. And sometimes, and I'm going to go back to the Arts Council, it's a very small group of people who put in so many hours that we go out and we look for volunteers. And we get volunteers until they find out how hard you work and that you're out there nine weekends out of your summer. And pretty soon, you know, we don't have those volunteers anymore. So maybe we, out there, we have created a situation that, you know, maybe someday the city's got to take it over because it's become so big. But it is something that is a signature event for this community. And remember, what we're talking about here is not funding the Camrio Arts Council for whatever it wants to do. The line item in the budget says concerts in the park, and that specifically is what it's for. I think the accountability is great. I personally have no problem with that. I would actually have no problems making the stipulation that we don't vote on it. Maybe the other thing we need to do to, I think it was Mr. Kildy said it, maybe we need to have only one member per organization, so that there isn't the perception that two members would be voting. That way, there'd always be four that aren't on the organization. Might be the good compromise. The Lions, I know we have two Lions members here. I don't know if you serve
Nope.
What organization?
Members, that's all.
Well, I don't think he was talking about members, because, I mean, we all could
No, I said
Join the Pleasant Valley Historical Society.
As I said, I don't think they're members. I think on hospice, you're the only one. So you would obviously would be the only one. And then if you didn't vote, there'd still be four people who would vote. So that might be the good compromise, that you always had to recuse yourself from the approval of the funds. In that way, because it isn't against the law, the district attorney came out and said that Mr. Morgan had no conflict of interest with the Fiesta. Our city attorney has told us this many, many times. We've asked to ensure that we were following the law. We've always denounced it when we serve on a board, that I'm a member of this board, and so that people know it. And so we haven't been doing anything that people don't know about. So I, you know, those would be my two suggestions and compromises that I would be willing to do. I will tell you, I will, I will tell you that, and I didn't mean to interrupt you before, but if you're talking about the concerts in the park, if you're going to adopt this, I will guarantee you that unless someone walks through that door right now, you won't have a concert season. Because the contracts are sitting on my desk, and I haven't signed them yet. So if you're going to tell me that I can't serve in that role, it isn't going to happen unless somebody else wants to come forward and, and take it on. So I don't mean to be threatening. It's just that you can't suddenly do that and expect it to happen. So we'd have to, at least if, well, I wasn't hearing three who approved, who were forward anyway. But if you were to do it, I just have to make you aware that you'd have to find somebody real quick to, to take that over. Because it, it just, you know, if I couldn't do it, it wouldn't happen under my watch this year. So with that, I do have one speaker sheet. Mr. Lorimer, again.
Well, you know, we were at this position, obviously, because of the Fiesta Association. You know, I've talked to these charities when I ran for city council. They're good organizations. I have nothing bad. I know some of you, I think all of you mean well. I think you really do want to do the good thing. It's the appearance. And each of you talk as it's your personal thing. And I get it. And I, you know, something like, I get that. The problem is, there needs to be a thing, I think there should be a community board that basically decides who the funding should go. And you guys shouldn't pick them. And then you shouldn't do the financial part. I don't have, I don't think there's a problem with you sitting on a board, making decisions on how to do that. I have no problem with that. I think the financial. If you have board members that say, Jan, I need you to pitch the deal to the city council during the breaks, or whatever, I think there should be rules saying that you can't pitch for any money. And I'm saying you do that. I'm just pointing that out.
Don't do that.
I'm just, what I'm saying, though, is, what I'm saying, the financial parts, okay? I don't see a problem serving on the board. But anytime you talk about money, getting money from the city, you should be recused. And when they talk about that in that board meeting, you should step out like you do here. That would be fair. So, you know, I know some of these organizations, I've talked to them. I think they're, they need your help. And I get it. You're in a leadership role, and they need, they need some people to stand up. And so, you know, I know I come here with a lot of crazy, I have my ideas, and sometimes you don't agree, you think I'm crazy. But I don't have a problem with you serving on the board. I have a problem with you in any capacity during the meeting where they talk financials, getting money from the city, or lobbying money, or having family members on there. I don't think you should have a family member lobby money. I don't think a city council person should lobby money, or you should vote on it. That's my only problem. If you want to be there and be the person that organized it, that's not the issue. I think the issue is money. You pay to play, meaning that you put a family member or yourself, and you go pitch it at any given time after work, or you go do stuff, anything like that should be clearly in words. You cannot pitch it. Your family members can't pitch it. And that would relegate the problem. But you sitting on the board, I don't see a problem with that, as long as you don't talk any financials, or none of your family members, or any friends, coworkers, come and pitch it to anybody on city property or anybody behind, that, if you do that part, I don't see a problem. You know, the concerts are great. Jan, I got to tell you, they're great. I have no problem with you doing that. I just, it's the financial appearance. And if anybody is doing an embezzlement or stuff like that, then you have to step forward as a person on there. You have to come to this meeting and say, we have a financial problem. If you're going to be involved with that, and you say, hey, I'm going to do that, then you should come forward. There should be a stipulation that we've had a problem, and you're going to come forward. Other than that, I think that's fair. Okay? So I hope you'll consider what I said tonight. And I think it's reasonable.
Thank you very much. I want to clarify something, since we're doing all this in public, and I suppose this is a good thing, because it's been brewing out there for a while now. I will tell you, I have never, ever, and I will never have and never will, do I violate the Brown Act. Never have I, in the hallways, asked any of you to finance any of my projects and that.
None of us have.
So I never have, and I never will. And I'm not going to send my family members down here to do the same. I will guarantee you that. And I don't know, I don't know of anyone who has. So please, public, I want you to know that. And Matt, I want you to know that. I personally have no problem not voting on it. I think that's fine. If that's what we need, I think we need to be clear and honest about it. What we serve on, what we do, what role we take. This policy will do that. One of the things that we ask for is a list of board members. You're going to be able to see who's on the board. You ask for financials. You ask for nonprofit status. I guess I should read it, because the people at home don't know what we're talking about. It discusses the eligible events. We have to be a Camrio-based nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization with the status verified annually, to make sure no one has lost their nonprofit status. Or it can be a governmental agency with primary offices in Camrio that provides services that directly serve or benefit Camrio residents. Ineligible organizations are funding for-profit organizations, nonprofit organizations, and governmental agencies without primary offices in Camrio. Also ineligible is monetary support for pass-through fundraising events. However, in-kind services may be provided. And that would usually be streets, closures, et cetera, police services. And also ineligible is ongoing operations salaries or benefits. Let me see. Pardon, let me read the eligible events. The city council in its discretion, the city's council in its discretion, may provide funding or in-kind services for community, culture, and entertainment events that benefit the residents of Camrio. These events must be open to the public and provided free of charge or at a nominal fee. And I will tell you why the word nominal fee in there is, I believe, the Fourth of July, they have a very small gate, they charge
Seven dollars.
Two dollars.
Two dollars.
So that, I think, one of the questions that came in in an email, what does nominal mean? It's not written in there, but that is, the intent is, the nominal is, you know, let's say, under $10. I mean, very nominal. We're not talking, I know that's all in the eyes of the beholder. Have I gone over the important parts? The application, there will be an application process. In that application, as the city manager said, it's due by April the first of each year. The request must be submitted on a form provided by the city along with requested attachments. The application must include program description, including dates and location, dollar amount requested, in-kind services requested, proposed use of city funds or services, estimated number of Camrio residents served. For a for-profit organization, it has to include the latest IRS determination letter of 501(c)(3) status, a list of the board of directors, a budget for the event, the organization's total annual budget, the organization's most recent annual financial statements, and then a report on prior year event for which the city's funding or services were expended. Then for government agencies, they're only asking for a budget for the event, and then a report on the prior year's services. And then there also will be an agreement that will be executed by the city manager, following city council following city council approval of budget allocations for the events. And then, also, under reporting and accountability, in addition to the items listed above, city staff may ask for additional information or verification that the organization or agency is in compliance with state and federal regulations. And that's basically telling the organizations that if you apply, you submit all this, the city account, or the city manager has the right to ask for any further information in order to satisfy any need. Did I cover all the important parts? Pretty close. But the public sits at home, and they've heard this whole debate, and they don't quite know what it is we're debating about. And so, I thought that was important, that we do it.
Your Honor, as you see, there's, to put on a major event, there is a lot of work, a lot of work. We have 20 strong members of the Fiesta Association right now that are going into every category, music, stages, 200 vendors. These are all doing this without money, doing it for the public and raising money for kids. We gave out $20,000 last year, because kids work for their money, and we not cleaned up the place, they did all kinds of things that helped earn that money for them. And so, I think that if you cut out something like this, or you're cutting out something important to the community, especially in the money range. And so, I.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Timbly was first, and then.
I'll go on deck, it's baseball season. I'll go on, I'll be on deck, strictly, you can go first.
All right. I won't throw you a curveball. And probably, I would assume there'll be a motion coming here, but perhaps.
A motion?
A motion, a motion, yeah. A lot of emotion, and perhaps a motion. With the policy here, and I'm not suggesting we sit back for some more work, but would there be any interest in a current and/or city council member that sits on one of these boards, that if a financial question does come up, that they, he or she will be willing to recuse themselves from voting on it? Would that be something that?
For approval of the funds?
Right, that the council would like to consider in this policy. Now, I don't know if we need to send it back for more work or not, if we want to wordsmith this up here tonight, but perhaps that's something that we could consider.
Anything, let me work my way down. Anything else that you want to talk about? Okay?
I think that was the, with the financial issue, I think that was the one that, at this point, I have.
Funding, okay. Mrs. Craven, anything? Mr. Timbly.
Madam Mayor, thank you. A couple of comments. Number one, as I said at the beginning, I'm not talking about this as a situation in which a legal conflict arises. As I said when I started my remarks, it's an appearance issue, and it's my, my own personal view in terms of trying to elevate the bar. I was not aware of contracts pending, et cetera. My reason in bringing this up is not to point at anyone specifically, including you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate having this respectful public conversation. I think it's a good, healthy thing to have this conversation. So, with that said, what I was going to suggest is that if a member made a motion to adopt the policy as presented, I would simply go ahead and make an amendment to the motion. You can let it rise or fall, and we can go from there. I, you know, I think I can read kind of the handwriting on the wall a little bit, relative to what I've articulated, and that's fine. But I, again, I appreciate having this conversation.
Well, I will tell you that perhaps, and I'm hearing it from Mr. Kilday, and I have no problem with it, if the, and I don't know if you're ready for a compromise, or if you're just going to do what you're going to do, but I think a good compromise would be to stipulate that, you know, if a council member were to participate, and maybe we'd have to send this back to get the wording right, but that that council member would not vote on the funding. I think that's a reasonable thing. I think that goes to, Mr. Lorimer was saying as well. While we always announced it publicly, what staff would have to do is pull it out of the budget, because these are line items in the budget, and it would have to be voted on separately, because right now, we vote on this $152 million, what was our budget? Am I right?
$21.
Twenty-one and a half. I just spent more money than I should have. And you're talking about.
You took in more.
Right, took in more, that's right. So, this huge amount of money, and you're talking about a very, very small piece of it. So, in the scope of voting on that, it's never been an issue as long as you announced it. If indeed, we need to pull it out and vote on it separately, I'm sure staff can manage to do that. I also personally, I don't have any problem if you want to, particularly if we got to the point of not having enough to vote, if you want to limit it so that there's not undue influence, if there's only one member per organization, I don't have a problem with that one either, if, if that would help in the perception of not having too much control by the city council. But I also want to remind you that we're talking about city events that we're funding, we're not talking about.
Just a few of them.
And just a few. Yeah, we're not talking about, you know, being able to spend this money for anything.
My thought, Madam Mayor, is that maybe the best course for council to do at this point is to, and this is a, you know, this is a brand, a new policy for presentation. I don't know that we're in a real hurry relative to anything specifically in terms of a timeline. My respectful suggestion is that perhaps this could go back to the committee, to the policy committee, for more consideration in light of the conversation this evening, and then come back to council at a later time, working through the issues that have been articulated this evening.
Madam Mayor, I do appreciate what the council member's saying, but in terms of timing, yes, we do have time constraints here. And so, if we were to take it back to the committee, I would anticipate getting it back to this council as soon as possible, because if we're going to be having an application process for applications that are due April first, we've got to get those applications out there, because, you know, these people are, they're going to have to produce, you know, new material for an application process they haven't had to do before. And it's not going to be easy. So, yeah, I would encourage the members of the committee, policy committee, that we would have to meet as early as next week, and pump this out and turn it right back around.
You know, the other thing we could do is, you can always revise a policy. So, if we would adopt the policy, then send it back to add, to look at, and I don't even know if the rest of the council wants to do that, but you could send it back to address these other issues, but at least you'd get your policy in place that starts that process.
Yeah, that would really be helpful to get the applications on the street, because these other matters really come up later.
I just need to kind of have an idea, do I sign those contracts for the summer concerts in the park?
Yeah, the same thing.
So, there is that, there is that timing issue.
I personally can't afford to pay for those. And we're all volunteers, so I doubt if I could pass the hat and get enough money.
Well, maybe, maybe what I would, what I would suggest is, given what the city manager has said, why don't we just move forward on a motion to adopt, someone, I assume, will make a motion to adopt this policy as presented, and there will be a second, and then I'll make a motion to amend it, to indicate what I did, and we can go up or down. And the city attorney can certainly advise us as to, it's the orderly process for doing that.
My suggestion would be, because then what you have is, if you've made a motion, then you make a motion to amend, you know, then it becomes a little more complicated. Another choice would be, you make your motion, and it either, it either rises or falls with the lack of a sec. If there's no second, then there's, then it's not.
Why don't I do that?
When we go by Rosenberg, we don't go by Rosenthal.
I know.
We don't go by Roberts.
We go by that, different rules of order, and I've been using another one my whole career. Okay, that's fine, then let me make a motion.
There is, there is one other choice, which is what I heard from the city manager, perhaps it was a combination of the discussion that was generated by the city manager's comment, but in terms of adopting the policy as it's written, and then a motion could be made to refer it back to the committee for potential amendments, consistent with the discussion that was presented by the council, and that could come back at a future date, but that's just another choice.
I would support what the city attorney has just said, just for the mechanics of being able to get these applications out on the street and get our organizations working on them for an April first deadline.
Well, why don't you go ahead, Mr. Timbly, and then make a motion?
I think the cleanest thing is just to make a motion. I may, I may be, right, and then we deal with it, and then, and then on the body of the main motion. So, my motion would be as follows, to, for the council to adopt the guidelines for city supportive committee events as presented, with the additional language added to section C five, as I articulated earlier. Is that specific enough for a motion?
Yes.
You want me to read the, you want me to read the language again?
The city clerk is nodding yes, so she apparently has it down, yes.
And does everybody understand what the additional language would be?
Yes.
Let me, let me read it again. The language of C five would say, Camrio-based nonprofits.
I'm sorry, go ahead. You repeated, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, there would be a, a section added to section C, which would be number five, and number five would state as follows. Camrio-based nonprofit 501(c)(3) organizations in which a member of the city council is a director or officer. That is my motion.
Do we have a second? That motion dies for a lack of a second.
Your Honor, I will move to approve this policy as presented in the packet.
Do we have a second?
I have a second, Your Honor. I just have something kind of funny here. I thought this was your letter. But it was from Mr. McVicker, saying almost the same thing you said.
It's not my letter, and I arrived at this, my views a long time ago.
And he very specifically said part of it wasn't his thing.
And I, and I, you know, I read, all due respect to Mr. Vicker, he sent us a long letter, and I, you know, that was the reason I answered, answered the question, what does nominal mean? So, and I think most of the other things in his letter were talked about, and if not, we'll take this under consideration if we look at it again.
I have a question. There's a motion and a second, but does that preclude somebody making a second motion after we vote on this?
No, we can vote on this one, and then, I'm assuming we can vote on another.
The answer is yes.
So, we have a motion on the floor to approve the, the policy as presented. Please vote. And that passes for yes, with Mr. Timbly voting no.
Your Honor, I will make a motion to refer this to the policy committee to look at changes in line with the discussion tonight, particularly about adding something so that a person who is a member of the board of directors or an officer in an organization that's being considered for funding would not be able to vote on that funding.
Would, I also, with the maker of the motion, also like to direct staff to say no, no more than one current city council member can serve on that board.
Let's take them one at a time.
Okay. Okay, so we have, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, this is to refer it to policy committee with the purpose of adding a sentence or paragraph regarding being able to vote on funding for an event on which you serve on the board of directors as a director or an officer. Did I got it? Oh, I'm sorry, please vote.
You want us to raise our hands?
All those in favor. Okay, and that does pass unanimously. Mr. Kilday, you want one?
Yes, I'd also make a subsequent motion, that as it's referred to the policy, that there's consideration that no more than one current city council member will serve on any of these organizations as a, what is it, a voting member and/or.
Board of directors.
As a board of directors.
Or executive.
Or executive.
So, one, but not two.
One, but not two, yes.
Mr. Timbly? Oh, do we have a motion? That was a motion? Do we have a second?
I didn't get a second.
Okay, then, motion and a second.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Cle is voting for this. This is just to have a conversation in the policy committee. It's not necessarily endorsing what you are articulating, correct?
Exactly, until it comes back for full council discussion.
And then, we get to do it all over again.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Please vote. Okay, whoops. Threw me for a loop on that one. That vote passes for yes, one, no, that being Mrs. Craven. Okay, anything else?
Let's be done with this one for tonight.
Well, that was a healthy discussion, probably something that needed to occur. And now, Mr. Lorimer, you don't have to talk about this anymore, you can talk about something else.
We get to come back.
We come back?
Oh, it comes back, that's right. You got to make sure we do.
We talk about it.
Okay, on the agenda, I think we're through all the agenda items, except for informational. Tell me if I'm wrong, city clerk.
You're right.
And, closed session.
And, oh, that's right, we didn't finish the study session. Okay, let's do new business and oral communications very quickly. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, council, I'm pleased to report that the city council, I mean, that the city of Camrio closed escrow on the sale of the Cedar Oak property.
Ooh, yes.
And so, that is off of our books, and we received $1.16 million for that property, and that, and the proceeds from that sale will go back to our housing fund for future use for more housing.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's great. All right.
Anything else?
I got a lot of it now.
No, I can't come up with more money than that one night.
No, $1 million a night.
Not bad. Anything from all of you? Mr. City Attorney?
No, I can't top that.
Yeah. City Council, let's start with Mr. Timbly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nothing relative to meetings attended since the last council meeting. However, I do want to indicate one thing. I was privileged last Friday to do a ride-along with the Camrio Police Department, and in fact, I started in mid-afternoon and went until very, very late in the evening, in fact, early the next morning, with Deputy Gerardo Cruz, who is a first-class professional peace officer. I think the men and women of our police department are outstanding. I think we are fortunate, so incredibly fortunate in Camrio to have an outstanding police department and peace officers like Deputy Cruz. So, my compliments to Commander Murray and to the department. I think they bring great credit to themselves and to the city. So, that concludes my oral comments.
Great, thank you. Mr. Morgan?
You'll be lucky tonight, because I've been gone. I was in the city, I was in Mexico with our Sister Cities group, and they treated us very, I mean, super well when we were there, and our people represented Camrio well while we were there. We got, that's why I brought back those trees, because everyone was so impressed how beautiful those trees were, and some other things, but it's kind of unique to see a city that's almost 500 years old, and the walls, a lot of the walls in Old Town are 500 years old. They're three block, three bricks thick. Then you have, you know, what do you call that? Put on the front of the bricks, and, yeah, plaster on the bricks, and they've kept themselves up. But, I don't know if you, many of you want to see bullfights, but it was a lot of fun, bullfights and rodeo. And then, the best place I've been in a long time is Montecristo, Montecristo, like Hawaii. We stayed there two days.
Thought you went to Outlaw.
We did, but we went to Montecristo. They took us to Montecristo, like we took them to Catalina and to Encinala. They took us to Montecristo. And so, the prices double here what we had to pay there for lodging at a five-star, right on the ocean. And if everyone suggests, I'd send you there. Anyway, it was a lot of fun, and I haven't, first time I haven't done anything else. So, I took a vacation.
You did a vacation, thank you. Mrs. Craven?
I've already told you about two things I attended, so I'll go on to, I attended the Ranch Foundation Board Meeting last night as a representative of the city, and I attended RDP 21 meeting yesterday morning, where we had a very interesting presentation about the CBs. Seventy-fifth.
Seventy-fifth, I knew it was those.
I had a question about the new medians on Ponderosa west of Las Poses. They are having, there's a healthy crop of weeds in there. In fact, it looks like a couple of them are so tall they're trees. Is there a way to get those things cut down?
Yeah, we can work with the developer to have them maintain that. They're obviously not done with the final landscaping out there.
Right, I hope.
Right, yeah. Right, yeah, yeah, the, even with all the rain and now the sunshine, the weeds are having a heyday.
Yeah, okay. It's green at least. I wanted to make sure that people knew about a income tax assistance workshop that Congresswoman Julia Brownlee's putting on, on Saturday, from 1:00 to 5:00. It's for people with, you have to have a maximum, I mean, your income has to be below $54,000. The preparers are certified tax preparers, and there's no age restriction. It will be at Cal Lutheran University Oxnard Campus, which is at Outlet Center Drive, Suite 600, 2001, Suite 600, so that's good for lower-income people. And the taxes, tax forms will be filled out for free for them. And quite by accident, on Monday, my grandson and I attended Paws for Reading. I should have announced this during the library one. He read four books to four different dogs, and it really is a neat program. I've not participated in that before. That's all. It seems rough. Was that Tom?
No.
Dave, it's catching. Oh, my goodness. Mr. Kilday?
Yeah, I attended a VRSD meeting, and as I drive down Arneal, at the Ponderosa Shopping Center, the weeds and the median are really getting big. I know it's an ongoing issue, but can we maybe have somebody come out there and, and look at that? And also, maybe, does anybody here up on the dais here know, I believe that that Steak and Hoagie is closed, has anybody gone by there? It used to be the first Taco Bell in town, it's right on Arneal, does anybody know anything about that? Saw a sign, and maybe can we, maybe get some info back with that? And another thing I want to bring up, and this might not be the time, and it pains me a lot to bring this up, but we have a homeless individual on our streets that is collecting an unbelievable amount of suitcases and wagons and everything else that we've got, and, and we have been dealing with this situation, I know, for many, many years here. But I actually walked down there, and part of the sidewalk can get blocked off pretty easily with this, and I know, it's just, it's a situation that is, it's, we're in dire straits with this, and I get what we've tried to do, but I know we have some monies for hotels, and I don't know if the individual's even close to even knowing that, but maybe there's a way that we can at least monitor that and see if there's anything else we can do, and I, I know the individuals that have been working with this, I commend you for this, but the situation's not getting any better, and I think all of us see it on a fairly normal basis here, and I just bring it up to see if there's potentially anything else that we could be doing there or not.
Yes, my staff will coordinate with the police department, and we'll look into this further.
Well, there's now a second one that's got the same kind of stack-up, and he's a gentleman, a gentleman, he's a man that is, last time I saw him, he was over by 99 Cent Store, and the spot, and the whole place was blocked.
With all the suitcase?
Going at nighttime, not just suitcase, just everything. And I, we're getting to have several of them now, that's two I know of, another lady, I think she puts it here and puts it down there, but it, both of them are hers.
She's been there for a long time today, and the lawn's blocking.
Who did?
The lady that moves them back and forth.
Yeah, that's the lady that moves them back and forth. What do you call that when you're loitering? When you stay there a long, long time, can't you get someone for loitering? Curiosity?
Well, it depends, are they in a public, you know, roadway or sidewalk, and not competing?
We should probably not be having the discussion unless you're going to ask the commander to come to the microphone so the public can hear him.
Okay, it's okay, I got you, we know the point.
I think the point is that staff will work with the police department to see if we can take care of some of the ones that are causing issues. Anything else, Mr. Kilday?
Could I also ask that we adjourn a young man, and the city was tragically killed, and his name is Matty Hickman, I know Mr. Morgan knows him, I know his dad, stellar wrestler at Camarillo High School, his dad was an outstanding athlete at Cam High, and tragically killed, I believe Matty was about 25 years old.
Right.
And he was coming back, actually, I believe, from a wrestling tournament up in Sacramento, I believe, and tragically killed, so with the concurrence of the council, if we could adjourn in the memory of Matty Hickman, he was really a good person and a real supporter of Camarillo, and, boy, Matty was a great athlete, I'll tell you, so.
Kevin, can I add to that a little bit? There will be a celebration of him on the 25th of March, at the, where is it, not the cemetery, out the, yeah, out of the graveyard.
Panale Mountain?
Yeah. And so, you know, I, I thought I was a good wrestler, that guy was great, he went all the way to the state and everything else in the world after that, a couple times. So, we, one of our best athletes in the past, has now deceased, unfortunately.
It's so sad, now I had read that he was supposedly the best wrestler to ever come out of the city, and it's so sad to see it, his life got short. Yeah, well, you said it first.
I know.
I just have a couple of things, speaking of great members of the Ventura County Sheriff's Department, since we have been together, I have attended a, I guess both of them, two retirements of our former police chief, Guy Stewart, and then Steve Decesary, since we met last time, and conveyed our deep respect and gratefulness for all he did for us. Steve was with, as our police chief, the second-longest tenure after Ray Abbott, as far as, so he was six and a half years as our police chief, so, and you heard tonight, when you, his legacy will live on, and a lot of the things that he did for us, so I did indeed thank him on behalf of the city of Camarillo. I had a VCTC meeting last week, and just thing I'd really like to report on is, is they're working on a bicycle wayfinding path plan, and this will, they'll have an app for it, and it can take you all over the county, and so it's something that will, should be out this spring, and that should be exciting. And then we also had a presentation on what is called the flying wedge, and this has to do with bicycles, and I'm assuming you've heard about it, and I'll give this to Public Works, and all it is, is it, when they're driving along and you come across something like a plate for a manhole, or the bump, to keep people on the roads, what do they call that, rough bump stuff? Rumble strip. It's just a little wedge they put on the markings to let them know something's coming up. It's really simple, so it's something that Caltrans is going to work on, on their areas, and then hopefully the cities will do it as well, just to keep bikes safer, bikers Two, or, two questions. Santa Rosa Road, all the planting's done in the new wall and everything?
Yes, yeah.
I've seen people out there a lot lately, and so I was hoping they were going to plant some more.
Right, the current effort is the final fence that's going at the top of the walls. It was a, we had a special order changing the height during the project, so that was a special order fence material, and that's been delivered and installed. But yes, you know, the plant material has been installed, as per plan.
Hmm, they're just a bunch of sticks.
It'll grow.
Have you seen it? There's not much, it's all wall. Okay. And my last one is the old carols, I noticed the for-sale sign's still there.
Yep.
Is it still for sale?
Yes.
We don't know, we actually did receive an application for Water Drops Car Wash, which is an automatic express car wash, self-serve, drive-through, and we're analyzing that, it's been deemed incomplete, and --
I thought you were going to say incompatible, I was excited.
We're actually working diligently to ensure that it is compatible in terms of aesthetic value and design, and then to abate any noise, so we would be recommending, if it proceeds, that it has some additional architectural treatment, and maybe some additional block walls that may be taller than that chain-link fence that's out there now around the property. So we are analyzing that right now, and it is incomplete, and we have been working with the operator, who has indicated they have property owner's consent to file that application.
The cars that are parked in that, Steve Thomas is renting that area for the car, all those cars parked in there now?
Yes.
They're waiting to get washed.
Before it gets too late, let's go on. We've got other things we have to do.
Yes, we do.
We need the city attorney to announce our closed session, please.
Yes, I believe we have one more study session item, and then after that, we've got closed sessions. There's a conference with legal counsel, anticipate litigation, significant exposure litigation, government code section 54956.9d2, number of potential cases is four, and then our other item is a conference with real property negotiator, the authority is government code section 54956.8, the property is the former fire station, and the other details regarding that item are in the agenda.
All right, with that, we are in recess.